This conference will now be recorded.
We've got a lot of things to do. On news, the news is still showing 39 counties and it was the same as Friday. They have the name of it. It was 11, so many, and then they told us 39. And it's still the same thing on Friday. Again, if it's on Monday, it's probably the same. So I think you're going to be quite high. Yeah, I try to be careful, you know? I go, I'm afraid of that.
Can you print out the numbers or it's just the budget?
Tried, I tried to have a fun weekend with my kid.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, but we're gonna call a meeting to work. Uh, we're gonna hold public comment until we get a little bit in and see where we're at. And then we'll go to public comment. Uh, we're just having budget discussion. So we can set this for a final budget. Go for Thursday. Okay, who wants to start?
Um, I guess I'll talk for a second, I don't know. Um, so a couple of meetings ago, three meetings ago, Kelly Elser came in, talked about ARPA funds and explained buckets, explained stuff. The next meeting, I think they were talked about again, and then we found out we got ARPA funds. But nothing was discussed for budget with the ARPA funds or where ARPA funds were going. Officer Moore quit coming to meetings a while ago. Um, I think that if he would have been present at meetings, we would have known he wrote the grant and was planning on taking ARPA funds. When we came into budget meeting, yes, we get budget before, yes, we look at it. Some of us are new. I don't totally know what's going on. This is my second budget. When you look at the budget for law enforcement, it looks like it went down a lot. Went from 79 or 125 to 79. I did not learn till the night of the budget meeting that 80,000, 79,000 was getting pulled to ARPA funds to the police department. I learned that night they were talking about a second officer. That's when I learned anything. So for me to just say yes to the budget and yes to everything was not that easy. And then I researched ARPA funds and made phone calls. Uh, Montana Department of Administration says that this money is not to be used to start a new position and that needs ongoing funds. And they also said when you start a new position, you need to do an HR audit. So these are things I'm thinking about and things I'm questioning now about just starting a second position that we don't have funds to proceed with. Um, Mr. Officer Moore talked about a mill levy in the budget meeting the other night. And that's, I think basically what we would have to do to continue the second officer job is to get a mill levy to keep a second officer. It's a lot of money to spend in training and everything for another officer. You have to put them through training, buy a uniform, buy a gun, update cars, whatever we have going on. So it's a lot of money for a position that we don't have the income to support next year. I feel like some kind of audit hours would help us decide what we need. We have a budget for a part-time cop. The part-time cop, when she got, when she quit, we never found somebody to replace her. And we were told it would take a lot of money for training, that we'd have to amend the budget. We didn't have the money kind of to do, and we haven't found one. So in my head, I'm thinking, could we maybe? And I don't know, again, because I don't know everything about ARPA money. But I'm thinking, can we keep the budget for a part-time officer? Give, use ARPA money for the training? And then we have the ongoing budget for a part-time officer? Because that's what's been in our budget. Or do we go to a mill levy right now or try to get a mill levy for a second full-time officer? These are questions, again, that nobody's discussed, but I'm thinking about. And then also, in this time, we found out that night the library budget had been cut. And I don't know if that's a miscommunication between Karen or whatever. But to give ARPA money to the police department and cut the library's budget also in my mind is weird because Karen worked really hard during the pandemic in fear of her child's safety because she has a high-risk kid. And she's done an amazing job. So I think that if we're gonna do the ARPA funds and start putting them out, we should look at where we're gonna spend them all over, not just one department. I just can't sign off on this budget the way it is right now if the money isn't there. We're not defunding the police. None of us up here have ever said that we want to defund the police or cut John's budget. We haven't. But. And then in the meeting, in the last meeting, budget meeting, John said that if he, with the ARPA funds, he's gonna get the second officer. And then next year, finding the money to support the second officer would be his problem. It's our problem, it's our budget. And again, I feel like next year's gonna roll around. And if we don't find the money for, to fill the gap or the mill levy doesn't pass, then again, we're defunding the police because we don't have the money for the budget for two cops. I think it's a lot of money if you put both salaries and their insurance and everything in. It's a lot of money for two officers. I'm not against it. I think that we do need more coverage. I just, not many towns in Montana have a one or two officer police department. It's an HR problem, our insurance company with MMIA. I have talked to them a few times, the same with the ambulance, but we started and went through there. I came on in the middle of that, so I talked to MMIA a lot. Those things are HR nightmares. Because it's not a real structured operating force. And they don't answer to anybody. Whoever comes in as the next mayor is John's boss. I don't know anything about running the police department. I don't know anything about running an ambulance. That's why I went to the hospital with professionals and doctors overseeing it. I just want you guys to know where I stand as a person, because a lot of stuff is on Facebook. It's getting hurtful. And you're not gonna find people to fill these seats if you guys keep being mean. There's two sides to every story. You can't even run, you don't live in town, please stop, Trevor. Great. There's a big landscaping project at the library that is outdoor seating because of COVID. I think some money should go to that. I think there's other places and other things we maybe should do. When it says right here that it's, funds allocated to states cannot be directly or indirectly to offset tax reduction. Adequate time should be taken carefully to consider all alternatives for prudent use of AARP money prior to committing to resources to ensure the best use of temporary funding. Please, or care should be taken to avoid creating new programs or add-on to existing programs that create ongoing financial commitment. I'm not making this stuff up, it's there. So I was elected to this position and I'm trying to do the best. I don't mind people calling me and talking to me if you think I'm doing something wrong. I do research, I do make phone calls, I do try to do what's best. That's where I stand.
Okay, can we, uh?
Wait, quick, can I, uh, can I make some comments on that?
Give me just a second. Can we go to page 24 of the expenditure report right? Okay, is everyone there? Uh, 174, 689 is monies that are unassigned for ARPA money. So the projects that you're looking at, if you were looking at a library project and it fit within the scope of the money could be distributed. That's undistributed money that we have not put in.
Okay, I'm sorry, page 24 and what number?
174, 689.
Oh, is that of a different one than the?
The dollar amount is from some east.
I know there's a lot of money left. And I know there's probably more money coming from the county because of ARPA. But it's.
So I don't see this paid in that budget.
It's, there's revenue and there's expenditures.
The rent, flag, marketing managers, and it's trying to double mine it. That is what, this is what is tranche one, tranche two.
There's a 225 sitting out there from the county that's not in this.
It's nowhere on.
Correct. And then just so you guys know that that's there because Kelly, in the meeting last time, said he was earmarking that for well.
Yeah.
But with this, we've got 174, 689 that's not assigned to any.
But.
Is it assigned?
The way it's posted, it goes to a lot of source of supply and funding.
But it's something that could be moved around a little bit as long as it fit within the scope of the ARPA money.
Not really, we need that money for the.
There's another 250,000.
From the county.
That's not on here.
It's not even in the budget. And they told her not to put it in the budget for accounting reasons or?
The county hasn't decided yet.
How they're gonna give it to us.
Okay.
Whether they'll have control of what we do or we have control, right? Yeah. And I get, I get that there's more money. I get that. But when I was on the phone with the lady, she said, this isn't really to be started for new positions. And she said, I, we should really, not I, but we should really look into other options and take our time and look at everything, not, we didn't even talk about the ARPA money. So is, that's my, my question too, is whose decision is this? Is it the department heads' decision on where the ARPA money goes? Is it your decision? I thought that's what, what are we here for? If we're not allowed to question this stuff, guys? I know, but every time we speak about anything, then I feel like I'm bullied or put in a, or made stupid or felt, it's a lot.
We're here to have a second meeting, let's keep it.
Also, a million people here mad at us, it's.
I'm not mad. I'm, uh, trying to find out what you're looking for, but you're saying that you were looking for.
I just don't understand how it wasn't a discussion at all.
Because I write the budget and then you guys come in and look at it and then we go over. I wrote the budget that way and that's, I felt strong with it. And the department heads wrote their budgets. There's questions on them, that's why you guys are here to have the discussions. This isn't a personal attack. It's just a budget that I put out. So now, when you're saying that you, the library needs landscaping, there's money there that can be moved around if you need to do that. And we will get to the police part of that as well. John will be able to speak on how that's gonna work. I felt, he will explain it to you and I felt like it was a good plan. So I allowed for the budget to be set that way. If you guys completely disagree with it then, but he's got, he will have his time to speak too. So you fully understand what he's asking for.
I thought of other stuff too. I mean, it doesn't really matter, but like Lions Club wanted heated bathrooms, so they're open year round when we do Christmas stroll and stuff. There's the other park in town, maybe a bathroom there. There's tons of stuff. I think that like even the community should have input on where this stuff goes and how we spend it. It's supposed to be COVID-related, like money. There's a budget for a part-time cop, let's do a part-time cop again, and there's money for training. I just, that's my thoughts, that's my two cents.
I agree, I think we shouldn't have a full-time position based on temporary funding. I'm not saying I oppose a second officer, I just think going to a mill levy would, and I would support going to a mill levy to add the additional officer. To me, it makes more sense than, I mean, the town's like a business, you gotta treat the revenue.
And 10,000 just on training and then it's a done job in a year is a lot of money to put, you know?
And putting it to a mill levy would let the residents of the town speak. And that's really what I care about.
Okay, John, would you like to go ahead and?
So does everyone understand exactly what? So the ARPA money is money that came in from the feds, so it doesn't burden our taxpayers one little bit whatsoever. That's why I wanted to use the ARPA funds for that. After President Biden's speech, July 19th, the Department of Treasury came out with their, their most recent FAQs, uh, which bore the ARPA funds usage. It's titled Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds as of July 19th. Um, so the headline I'm reading is 4.8. Can I use the funds to prevent, respond, and support public safety in my community? There's only bullet points on here, so the first set of bullet points on the next page, hiring law enforcement officials even above pre-pandemic levels or paying overtime, where funds are directly focused on advancing community policing strategies in those communities experiencing increased gun violence associated with the pandemic. We had 100% increase in murder by firearms last year alone in this city. So therefore, that very much fits that. You tell me how another officer on the street making community contacts, out there making, building relationships with this community is going to be a detriment to this community. It's not costing the taxpayers a cent right now. So why not try it? If it doesn't work, then guess what? I'm coming up and flat-out saying in a recorded public meeting, if I can't get the funds for this, I'm not gonna hold you responsible. I'll be the first one, no offense here, Trevor, to tell you to shut the hell up. Okay? I'm the one telling you that we've got an opportunity here, let's see how it works, let's see it work. The deal with the Sheriff's Department is not going to continue. I pretty much can guarantee you that. We have a very sweet deal with the Sheriff's Department with how they work with my schedule. That's not going to continue, I'm willing to bet money on that.
What do you mean?
Meaning they're going to start charging us like they charged Quinn, Sheridan, and everybody else if we don't do something in place of that. We have a second officer, has two 12, has 12-hour shifts, we can cover seven days a week. So that only gives them 12 hours to cover. That significantly reduces what they have to cover.
How? Two officers, you can't.
Two officers work 12 hours, work 12-hour shifts. So one works Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the next week's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. The next week, you work Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, the other officer works Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
So what are your?
12 hours a day. So that, that gives you 12 hours a day coverage for every day of the week.
But now to the one question that Christie had, uh, what if you don't have money in the next budget?
And that's what I said, I'll be the first to tell them to shut the hell up. They're not defending, they're funding the police department, that one was on me.
But how are you gonna go about getting the funds too?
So it's been told to us that if we use the coronavirus funds for positions, that we will be bumped up in the grant opportunity. Right now, you guys have what the feds call too much discretionary spending. Meaning I can't get cops grants for officers right now because you're spending the money elsewhere. You have the money to do it, you just choose to spend it elsewhere. That's not my words, that's the feds' words. Because they look at, they look at the entire budget minus the water and sewer because those are enterprise funds. And they say, well, no, there's money there, they could be contributing more. I don't control that, I have to turn in that stuff, they send it back and say, no. Okay. So they're saying that if we use these coronavirus funds, that will bump us up on the list to possibly get those cops grants. I'm also gonna try it for a mill levy and see what we can do there. I've got lots of options. There's about five or six different officer funding grants that are out there right now that, for that would be next budget year because we have to apply for them in somewhere between February and April. And then that, then we find out for the next fiscal year. But that one's on me, not on any of you, totally 110% on me, my responsibility.
So what's the extra money gonna be spent on? Will we hire, are you looking to hire an officer right away? Or is that if you start chasing the grants to see if you can get the money first?
Well, I can't start chasing the grants till they open them back up, which would be next year. So that money right now, when you fund that officer.
I'm, I'm confused on budget too. And I don't, again, I was gone for the weekend and I have a life.
So I have the money, that money is for to hire somebody, go chase somebody, hire somebody hopefully. And by doing that, we get more, we get them trained. The rest of my budget has not gone up, one single penny. All of my vehicle expenses, nothing else has gone up. I have kept the convict in good shape, so we have a second patrol car. We don't need to buy another patrol car. We have a computer, we have everything that we need for that second officer already, right now. We just need a body. And this was my idea, to get a body in here so that we can do it. And we need the people out there. Calls are not going down. The Sheriff's Department is significantly up in both Sheridan and Twin on their call volume, which means that it decreases our response time when they're covering over here.
John, how long would it take to get a mill levy going?
Uh, that would have to be probably.
May ballot.
The February, was it February school board election?
I think it's May 3rd.
May 3rd?
So it could be all on May 3rd.
We would have to, we'd have to push it till next year, there's no way we can get it done this year.
So last year, you told us you didn't hire a second officer because we'd have them in the budget and it costs too much. How much have you looked for a second officer?
I put it out on all the sites, the problem being is, is they have to post-certify. So they have to come already trained and already certified because I can't send a part-timer to the academy, which is required by state law. So by not being able to send somebody to the academy, I am very limited in my scope. You're not gonna find somebody who wants to move here for 20 hours a week in law enforcement.
Okay, so, and on your budget for law enforcement services, salary and wages last year was 72,155. I got a payroll report, which Ashlyn's not in, I'm not sure why, but it comes, your salary comes to 51,683.
Ashlyn was budgeted for for the entire year last year.
But this is what was used. So I'm just confused on how there's a $20,000 difference too. I haven't had time to talk to anybody, ask anybody questions, so I'm just doing it here. Your payroll was 51,000.
Okay.
And law enforcement salary and wages that was used was 72,000. And I doubt Ashlyn made that much because Ashlyn barely worked in the last fiscal year. I'm just confused and I know, but I didn't have time to get with Ginger, I didn't have time to get with anybody, so I'm just doing it here. And you're asking for 79,000 per officer. It's like salary and wages, but yours was 51,000 last year. I'm just confused, tired.
So we spent 79% of the 79, so 72,000.
Isn't that was, what was spent was 72,000?
No, that's what the budget amount was. So 57 out of 72, yeah.
Okay, I'm just confused, I'm asking questions, I haven't had time to meet with anybody. So still, we're at 51, so 79 to run both. And would that be another 5,000 in the car budget?
No, I'm.
No, the put-away car budget, the money that we don't.
Oh, yes, because we will need to replace cars eventually, yes.
So that'll be 10,000 there.
No, that would just be one $5,000 amount.
Okay, it doesn't go up per officer, okay.
I told you, I'm not touching any bit of the rest of the budget, with the exception of that $4,000 for hiring because the feds and the state put, that's the only new line item in my budget.
The lady I had talked to on the phone said it was for existing officers for more time and overtime. She said to stay away from the startup. And this is just who I talked to, Department of Administration.
Treasury put out after Biden's speech saying you could add that, and this is right from the treasury.gov site. Correct, this is the FAQ on that because he made a speech, President Biden made a speech that contradicted some of the stuff in there. So they came out with the FAQs and posted them, it is right on the treasury site.
Yeah, it does say, and my whole issue, I don't have a problem with adding a second officer.
I just don't wanna be in the same position next year to fund the police.
It's the going in perpetuity. I know you said, oh, it's on you and whatever, but at the same time, then we spent the money to train in whatever officer, and then if we don't have the, that funding does not come through, then that is then gone.
Correct.
So, and that, and so that is the, so that is the issue. And according to this, it says accordingly, fiscal recovery funds may be used to support the payroll and covered benefits for the portion of the employee's time that is dedicated to responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency. For administrative convenience, the recipient may consider public health and safety employees to be entirely. public health and safety employees to be entirely devoted or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency and therefore fully covered. Or his or her operating unit or division is primarily dedicated to responding to the COVID-19 public.
Correct. But you have, just like law, you have to look at the law that was written, and then you have to look at the decisions that were made based on those laws, which are the FAQs right here, which I read to you. So they, they clear that out. We do qualify under the hiring additional people in this, in this section right here.
Here. And I guess, I guess I'm just going back to, it's a one-time allotment. And talking with the Department of Administration, Carrie Powell, she said it was a very unwise decision to start a position and not have subsequent funding for year, for, or have funding for the subsequent years. That is what she said. She's the one that makes the webinars on the Department of Administration. She really knows what she's talking about. And that was, she said it would not be fiscally responsible to do that. And so that is where we're at. I'm okay with going for a mill levy, going for these grants. That is, that's wonderful. Let's do that. But we can't start a position and then all of a sudden take it away. And that is where I'm at. And we, we, and then at that point, we still need to work out our conundrum of our growing pains of, you know, the, you know, the sheriff's office gets called into, say a call at Valley Garden there, maybe in Pony, they have to respond, but then we have officers then here. So it seems as though we could collectively work on a more efficient system altogether.
Almost more coverage for you.
Yeah, and more
If they're going to start charging us, if we
It's going to cost us a whole lot of money.
No, 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 no. If, if you get a second officer, maybe you can have more coverage. Go a little bit further to help them.
I don't want to go further out. These, the taxpayers are the ones that pay my salary. I'm paying to be here. You know how many tickets I've written to Justice Court this year? That, that absolutely none whatsoever, which means I have done no enforcement outside of city limits whatsoever. Other than felonies
Is that normal?
Have to go to district court. So everything I've done has been in city limits this year.
Sure.
So I don't want to go anywhere else. I, there's more than enough going on in this town.
No, and I get that, but as a community, because I, a fair amount of these people that live here or are in this room tonight don't actually live within the town limits. And so how do we work as a community? Where are, do, is it annexing more properties in? Should we talk to the homeowners association at Valley Garden, Gulf Village? Do we talk to Skyview and say, do you want to be annexed in? Because this is where, so I guess just from a logistics standpoint, and I understand you don't, there's enough going on in town, but I think the people that live at Skyview feel as though that they live in Ennis and should be covered by, you know, it was the same, I guess, yeah. So if there's an officer that is close by, but then we're still waiting for the county, because they're county residents and I understand that. But I just think that there, with these growing pains, there's got to be a better collaborative system. And with adding a second officer, that gets us to 80 hours of 168 hours of the week.
That's not true. It actually gets you to 86 and 86 hours every two weeks. So 43 hours every week per officer.
Okay.
So, and that, and that's where you, that's where you get the 12-hour shifts, 12 hours a day for without overtime.
Is it, is it normal from previous cops and stuff that the county doesn't write city tickets and you don't write justice tickets? Is this normal? Or is there division?
The county does not do any ordinance violations and they write everything
But they don't write anything to city court either? They never have? This is normal?
Very seldom.
And it's normal that the town cop doesn't write any to justice? Or is there division?
The only time I'm going to justice is if there's a direct conflict. So if I stop somebody and there's a direct conflict, bring him in front of Judge Behar, let's say I stop his wife and order a speeding ticket. I wouldn't write that ticket in here, that would go up to Justice Court. Because it's a direct conflict.
And the one thing we need to look at as well, I'm going to build on what you had said, Lee, says we've got our master plan coming, which we have a meeting next week to really see that. And one of the big things on that is annexation. So do we, I understand where you're coming from in the funds aren't secured, but do we wait until we have a problem? Or are we going to be proactive and have a second officer available to cover this? We're growing, this is going to grow. And I consider the issues, gives me a little bit of positive
But how much more do we grow? West Yellowstone has a police department and everything and a holding cell. We don't, how much more can we grow? We don't have a holding cell, we don't, that's infrastructure, that's big.
Is there annex in this town?
Well, no, I'm saying, but do we go to the county? Or do we stay with, grow our police department? Then you're looking at infrastructure, you're looking
You're going to have to grow your police department, because the Sheriff's Department is not going to be able to
And I'm not saying we don't grow the police department. I'm saying we have to have the funding, secure funding, year after year.
But we're not giving them the chance to go get it.
Because what if it fails? And then we're left, that we've spent all this money that could be, that is supposed to be allocated for a one-time allocation for community projects.
For COVID-related
COVID-related
Community projects.
Suicides are up, that's COVID-related.
Mental health calls are there.
Yeah, so why don't we get a mental health for a bit?
Well, we got to clear some of the ignorant talk. I mean, this is ridiculous. Please stop. You'll have your turn to talk and we're done with this.
Sure, and there are, there are programs to look at mental health, you know, like, I want to support not only what is Karen doing, but I want to learn from what other communities and what they are doing with the ARPA funds too. I just don't think that we should jump into something that has not been discussed and allocate these funds within, you know, a matter of a couple of days. I think this takes a long discussion, maybe even a workshop with the community members, and look at the parameters of what we can do with these funds.
Yeah, I wish you would have explained it to me. I'm sorry, I wish you would have explained it to me. That's the only thing I'm
You know, my door was open, you guys could just come in and talk.
I didn't even see it on the budget, I didn't get it. This is my second budget, they're in two totally different line items. It's not added to the police budget. I had no clue, I thought your budget went down a bunch. I was blindsided.
Let's start looking at this a little bit outside the box. I like what Jason had said about the mill levy. Why is this not something that we can move forward with and start the mill levy process at the same time too?
I don't know if right now is the perfect time for the mill levy either.
We can increase the police department's budget, say 10% from last year's budget for now. We'll do the mill levy. It'll go on the ballot in May. And at any time during the year, we can do a budget amendment. There's nothing stopping us from doing a budget amendment.
So if, how would you handle those funds though?
I'm not, I don't know where to put them, I'm
I don't think we decide. I don't know why we have to decide. I don't know why it's already allocated. We didn't even get to talk about it.
Just put them back in the
Maybe they're not for us.
Or is, can there just be a general line item?
ARPA fund, I don't know.
To be decided? Could there be a line item that says for the ARPA funds instead of a, is there a different code number that we can put them on that are to be determined? Or Not really, I have, when you're allocating funds, they need to be to an account as the cost codes.
What makes me nervous too is we're cutting his knees out. He can't go and try and get the grants, because without him spending the money, he can't get the grants that he's looking for exactly.
But those grants aren't guaranteed either. Like, you know, Virginia City put in ARPA fund grants for the competitive stuff for their water and sewer, and that was declined. So they're not a shooting.
There's no guarantee in life. But that's, that's why, that's why I plan on trying multiple angles with it, you know? I'm going to try the mill levy, go for the grants if I get the money. Otherwise, it's going to be the same thing. And, and you know, I'll submit
Are those grants, how are those grants done? Are those done on a yearly basis? What is the funding for the grants? So say you did get the grants, how long
It depends on the grants. The cops grant, which is the one I'm going for, is a six-year position. Feds will pay it 100% for three years. The town has to pay guaranteed, they'll pay it for the next three years after that. But what you do is you split that up over six years instead.
Or find a way to
So you're paying, you're paying half of that every year. And you just put it into a savings account. So when the feds are done paying, you've got your, you've got your other half to pay the, the second half of it is more how some communities do it.
Yeah. And what are the criteria? Like, I know we've talked about before about the new data, that system that the sheriff's dispatch is using on ways to code. I mean, do they use data? I mean, is there data? I know calls are up, but what are coded calls and severity of calls? How is that?
You go off the month, you go to the crime control crime statistics. Because those are reported right to the feds. We don't even submit them, they look them up.
Okay.
So we, we don't even have to do that. What we have to submit is the budget to show that there's a need for it. As long as we can show a need for the officer, you basically get the cops grants. There's billions of dollars in it. The problem being is, is when you submit the grant and there's too much what they call discretionary funding, they deny it on the preliminary application, because the town has enough money to do it. They just choose to spend it elsewhere.
So where is that? Is what kind of algorithm do they use? Do they look at it as a percentage of discretionary funding?
That I do not, that I do not know.
Or what? I mean, because basically, you know, our, you know, the library budget was cut, the parks budget was cut, like, we run this thing
There was money, when I talked to the lady, the parklets were one thing, the siding on the senior center, because you're giving money to the senior center every year for that, was another one. So that was money that could have been put into the police department budget, but the town chose to put that elsewhere.
I know, but that wouldn't pay, I mean,
No, but it's not showing
$4,000 or $5,000 is not going to
It's not showing, it's not showing the need, because you're choosing to spend the money elsewhere. So you're looking for a handout, is kind of the way they look.
Yeah, but $10,000, it's like when someone
It's still money, it's still money that could be there, that could have been done and handed over to the police department to try to make it better. But instead, you're choosing to spend it somewhere else. And that's, that's what they do with it. I, I don't have any control over what the feds do with the cops grants. And the lady that I talked to, this last year was very nice about it, but she pointed out, you know, they go back five years in the budget. And they, she was very nice to point out the things that what they call discretionary funding.
Yeah.
That was a red flag for them.
So then are we going to be in that position next year? Because we're spending
Because this year, wait, hold on just a second. Last year, we increased your budget for the halftime officer. So it does show that
No, no, it wasn't last year, it was three years ago.
Okay, so if they're taking five years, it does show a track record that we are trying to do something, correct?
But the senior siding and the parklets and all that play into that. Hard, hard play into the, the funding there. And they, they say that it just, it doesn't match for us. So yes, I could apply, but my chances of getting an application are none. So she's like, don't even bother, because you don't have anything. Now, what they're telling us is if we use the ARPA funds for law enforcement, because we'll show that that officer will potentially be de-funded at the end of the ARPA funds running out, then cops grants goes, oh, here's the money, have a nice day. If you show that you're laying off or cutting the workforce, then the ARPA funds go ahead and try, and basically, not the ARPA, sorry, the cops grants go ahead and say, okay, you're cutting, no, we don't want you to cut, here's more money. So I'm playing a game is what I'm, is what I'm playing.
Yeah, and that would, you know, that would be okay if it was a project that wasn't, you know, like, yeah, a project, you know, or someone's livelihood that wasn't, you know, he's now dependent on this job, or he or she is now dependent on this job, and then he cut it. Like, that just, if the funding does not come through. So what happens then? So then that person has become, you know, now they're moving on and they're looking for a job. And I don't know, I, I guess from my perspective, and I know it's been difficult, because they have to come pre-trained. And I'd like to hear more about the reserve officer position too, because it seems as though that and, you know, that you want a halftime, a secured halftime position that has the potential to go to a full-time position, as opposed to taking a full-time position that has the possibility of just ending. So
That should be going down to a halftime position.
Or going, going down to the halftime. So it almost seems like you'd be wanting to work up and then to, instead of maybe trying to go backwards.
So the issue is, is finding someone, is hiring somebody.
Yeah.
Phil right now has had a position open for the Sheriff's Department with a post, for a post-certified officer. In other words, somebody who's been through the academy.
Yeah.
He has not been able to fill that position for almost, I think it's eight months is what he told me the other day. So they can't find somebody to fill it. So right now, the person that would be hired, would be hired under the condition that the funding may run out at this point. And they have to, they have to accept that. Now, that, what's to say that we don't hire somebody and they go, all right, now I'm post-certified. See, I'm going to Bozeman or see, I'm going to
That's what I'm scared will happen too.
You never know.
We spend 10,000. That happened a lot with the EMT stuff. They would get them certified and good, and then they go
I'm not going to play the what-if game. I'm going to, you know, whoever gets hired is going to be hired and trained to the best of everybody's ability. They're going to be hired. And if they want to go, you know what? I hate to see you go, but I love to see you leave, because you're going to be happy. We don't want unhappy cop working here, period.
Another thing we need to look at, and please check my math on this. I was, he was budgeted 125, 930 last year. When you put the two of them together, his budget has increased 32,466. That right in that range.
That doesn't count, but, okay, but that does not count, health insurance, which we then, is if we're going to hire someone full-time, figured out it costs about $2,000 per month, which is another $24,000 for the year for health insurance.
They're different line items. Insurance is different line items. It's not in the budget, it's not on his budget, so
Okay, so that's
So, yeah, it's
It's about $200,000, a little bit over for two officers.
What can, can we tie hiring a new officer to increasing revenue by increasing property taxes?
You can't say anything about increasing revenue in the police stuff. Yeah, that's not, you can't tell them to write more tickets.
No, no, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, can we, can we get more revenue to the city from real property taxes?
Well, the taxable values are going up.
Yeah, so taxable value already went up, and I
Oh, I'm just trying to figure out
And there's not permissive mill levy, are there permissive mill levies for law enforcement? So it would have to be a voted-on mill levy. And I think that, I think that gives the voice to the people on whether or not that they, you know, want to, because it's in perpetuity. It's going forward. And so you might have grants for three years or six years, but then, I mean, it's almost like when Ennis voted, voted to have a police department, they should have assigned mills to it then. The funding to it then. The funding to it then. And so those way, if it goes to a mill levy, those are dedicated funds to the police department.
Yeah, and I don't think we're in danger waiting till May. I, I mean, we're going through the slow season of winter. Like you said, we're being proactive in doing the, adding a person, not reactive right now, so.
And how would that go if we ran the mill levy vote in May? Those funds wouldn't be available till the next year.
Correct, they wouldn't be available till the next budget year.
Till June? So it wouldn't even work when the ARPA levy ran out?
That'd still be in our fiscal year. So.
I have a couple of questions. What do you think it would cost to cause for a fully-trained officer to come to Ennis? I'm sure there's a lot of officers around.
You got housing. That's your biggest thing. You got housing. That's your biggest thing. It, so we're required, if we open up a post position, we're required to post it through the Department of Justice. It goes on the DOJ's website. It goes out through what we call.
Have you, you did that, right, with the part-time?
I, I got a few phone calls and then I went, oh, part-time, never mind, not interested. You know, it's, the problem is, is you're not finding people that are post-certified, so able to work as a law enforcement officer because they're not certified. So we have to get somebody certified for that part-time position.
Is there a title that you could use other than, like, if you had somebody come help you that wasn't a police officer, or is that?
No, they have these warrants. They have these warrants, which by state statute makes them a police officer.
Well, I, what I'm trying to get at is, you know, like, if I had a number in my mind, and say, you know, like, in your particular case, you get fifty-one thousand dollars a year to be the police officer, the police. Would it deterrence another officer who is trained and may want to move, so with fifty-one thousand dollars, enticing to come?
Not even close. I mean, if you're looking at somebody to move, I mean, you, you go up to Bozeman, Sheriff's Department's starting, uh, post-certified at like sixty-two plus overtime a year. Now, their benefits aren't the best, but the young kids don't look at the benefits. Um, you know, you go up to Bozeman, they're at between seventy-five and eighty, Galton County Sheriff's eighty-two, uh, starting for post-certified officers. I mean, we are extremely, extremely low right now.
So here's a question. So do you want to hire a, a person who's not post-certified, right? That, that's the goal?
So.
Well, that's, that's, if, if they're post-certified, they would have a, a preferential, preferential treatment.
Sure.
Because they get more points on the application process because they're already post-certified.
Sure. Okay, and so then how long does the academy take?
It's three months.
Okay.
Uh, but we don't pay anything for that. The Department of Justice pays for that.
So theoretically, we wouldn't have an officer, even if we hired someone tomorrow, they would have, have to go to the academy. So we would still have another three months for a person.
The academy, so they, they actually can start. Um, they can actually, um, do whatever, you know, they can go and become, now they have to go through field training, um, which means they have to be trained by me.
Okay.
And then that takes, that takes six months.
Okay.
And then they have to go to the academy. So the earliest academy date as of right now is April of this year.
Okay. So, I mean, so based on that, we would not get somebody to be patrolling until when?
So they would be, well, they'd be patrolling with me while they're on field training.
So we wouldn't have the split coverage.
They're not independently trolling. So how long until someone is independently?
Nine, nine months, including the academy.
Okay.
And no matter what we do, that's, that's where we're at.
Sure. Okay, so if that, okay, so if that is nine months, and we could put out a mill levy this spring and potentially hire someone with all that training already, we'd almost be headed the game to where this nine months is.
They still have to go through six months of field training. So you're only, you're only now.
Even somebody that's out of the academy has to go through six months?
Even somebody who's post-certified, you still have to go through.
So no matter what we hire, we're looking at six months riding with you before we have more coverage.
Correct. And that's, that's if they don't have any deficiencies that are found in field training. Now, if they have deficiencies in field training, you have, you have to do a corrective action report, and you have to go ahead, and they'll be in field training longer.
Do they have to do the academy first and then field training?
No, they do field training first and then the academy.
What would that position pay? I don't know if these wages.
Seventeen an hour is what, is what I figured that out.
Plus person insurance, right?
Right, plus insurance and everything, correct. And that's, that's the selling point that you, you're using some of the other guys here, which is the insurance, which is the benefits.
So forty hours a week or forty-five?
Uh, it's forty-two hours, it's forty-three, eighty-six hours every two weeks before.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight what?
Thirty-eight thousand, twelve dollars salary.
Seventeen.
Yeah.
One of the things about the funds that we have is, is we have to prioritize it. The most important part of that money should be for a well. No matter what anybody says, we need the well. And that should have top priority. And we have no clue of what a well is going to cost.
Also keep in mind, and I don't know if you've heard or not, we have two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the county that's sitting out there.
But we're not guaranteed on that yet either, though.
Yeah, no, we're guaranteeing.
But not on how we can spend it.
Yeah, so it's, well, it's one of two, it's a one of two ways. Either the.
Yep. Well, they can either allocate how we spend it overseas.
It's still under the blanket of ARPA fund. And so, um, the county is determining whether it will be a lump sum to the town or if it's gonna be a reimbursement.
But you, Kelly's, but Kelly's last meeting said he's got two million dollars in reserves. He's got a lot of reserves.
Goes really quick if water main breaks.
You could, the ARPA funds, are they not designated for public utilities, the ones that the county is holding? Okay, water is public utilities.
So we're hoping to use that for well, but we're not sure yet what the county, how the county, or what the county, because they could tell us how to spend it too, I think.
If they do a reimbursement, you have money to.
To, oh, pay it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So there is.
So that's Kelly's, for sure. That too.
Yeah, it, it's just how.
I just am confused. None of this was explained to us. I'm really confused.
I just think there's a lot of possibilities for the ARPA funds specifically. There are a lot of possibilities for the ARPA funds too. And I would like to really see what other creative things that other, I have a call in the headwaters RC and D, because there's also ARPA funds through the community development block grants, um, available too, that are for public facilities and that.
Who pays for all those grants?
We do. Sure.
Well, let's find a way to make work what we've got. Yeah.
I feel like, I feel like grants are there regardless of who gets, like, it's gonna be there regardless. So why not try to get it for our town?
Yeah.
Grants are there for that. I wish we had a grant writer. I wish we still had Barbie Durham to do this stuff, because there is a lot of money out there that would help. We're behind on infrastructure a lot. And downtown, the water and sewer is, you think two million is a lot in reserves? It's gonna go overnight if something happens. It's, nothing's been updated. Even the meters on the houses, that would make it easier for the.
There's just all kinds of.
There's. I just, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just nervous of starting a position and going in perpetuity. I would rather have the funding in place before going for that.
Because if we cut the budget next year, we're defunding the police for real. And I'm not trying to be back in this situation or back in this hate.
Somewhere, when he says have those funds, so when he goes for federal stuff, I mean.
And then are we gonna get ousted again?
And then have that in perpetuity.
If he goes and applies for grants again, are they gonna say, we have too much money, then we spent it wrong, and he doesn't get it? And I don't, frustrating. I don't know what to do.
Donna, a code enforcement officer is what, three forks currently has. I believe that they're spending approximately the same amount to facilitate that. Is that something that you see that you could maybe incorporate into?
They, they couldn't be sworn, so all they could do would be your code enforcement, and that's it.
Did they go to that because they contract with the county? They made somebody that just does codes? Yeah.
So, yeah, you could do it, but they, I, I mean, they can't do what we do as law enforcement. So that still leaves me with no backup. That still leaves us with one officer in the town. That still, that still leaves us extremely short right now, and that's not gonna help us in the long run.
And how long do you have, do you think we have before the county starts charging us or something? Because like, right now, even if you start tomorrow, you're looking at nine months before somebody's.
If we can show that we're making an effort moving forward, I can probably still negotiate what we have right now. But if, if we decide that, well, no, we wanna keep it the status quo, I can't make any guarantees what's gonna happen.
So the budget could go out of the roof, and we're gonna get, start getting charged for that economy?
They're, they're just charging us for dispatch services right now.
I don't know how that could, I don't, they don't charge twin and shared in right now like that. I thought nobody paid.
Which is significantly cheaper.
Roger did, they go the way of the.
They contract, they, they have a, a different twin and shared in, they share it in contracts with them in some capacity. I don't know how many mills or anything like that. But it's still, it just seems as though that.
I don't know what's the best option.
I would like to see it go to a mill levy.
Public comment or no?
Outside of town.
I'm, I'm, are you guys, uh?
I'm good to listen. I just, yeah.
You all right, Lisa?
Yeah.
Okay, raise your hands and I'll call on you as we have a comment. And then please state your name.
I'm Heather Adder. I live down Barney Road. I'm trying to make this as clear as I can. So when there's a mill levy for the schools, we all, outside of town proper, pay for them. Um, if our police force needs more money, why don't you annex all of us in? I would be happy, happy.
I wish they would have annexed so much more.
More funds, because if I have a problem and I call nine-one-one and the only officer that can help me is Anthony.
Yeah.
You're, it's gonna cause all kinds of problems. Shining mountain, up VC ranches, the campgrounds, the lakes. You're just asking for trouble.
Well, I think it was, um, the same. It was, you know, there's places that I don't wanna be annexed in. And so when we annex in a property, so there's a couple of different ways to be do it, to do it. Um, and so, and I'm not any kind of expert on that. So one of the ways is if a property is fully surrounded, you can forcibly annex them in. But then you have to provide a plan to provide city water and sewer services to them as well. And so, so we do have, I mean, that's part of our master planning process, is talking about annexation. When, you know, Valley Garden Golf Village went in, what was that? I don't know. When was that? Seventies?
Forty years ago.
Yeah, it was a long time ago. Yeah, eighties, I was gonna say. They looked at annexing in, but then they looked at the cost of water and sewer and said, oh, or I think maybe at the time, our current, or the, at the time, the facilities couldn't use it, and so they were like, no, we're not gonna annex in. We're gonna do our own thing.
Why does the annexation have to be so fully structured? Why can't it?
Because it's, it's because it's by state statute.
Okay, so you can't just do law enforcement and, and pay for whatever that portion.
Not for.
That'd be like a district, like a ambulance district or parks district or something like that.
Is there a law enforcement district?
So, no, they, they, it's the sheriff's department or it's the city police department, and you'd have to be within city limits for that mill levy to apply to you. That's, that's the way the state laws are, are written out. Um, if you go like that quote to Helen and change it with a legislator, we, we've got zero control over that, unfortunately.
I'll think about that, but, um, just the city is just growing, and, and with that growth, there are increasing problems, and it's the nucleus of this entire community, and it's like throwing a pebble in a pond. It's, we're gonna, we're gonna all feel it.
It, it does. I mean, it, it's, it's all or nothing. On, on your comment that, you know, if something's going on in this emergency, um, we don't care who's coming when we, when, when there's an emergency going on. The sheriff's department will send me anywhere that they need to in an emergency. I just wait, you know, take care of the situation and wait for the deputies to get there. So we don't.
I just care how long it's gonna take.
And, and we don't, we don't discriminate when it comes to that. So when, when I said earlier, I've been saying, all my enforcement actions have been in city limits. However, that does not mean that the dispatch center has not sent me out of city limits. So, I mean, I've been up the lake this summer. Um, I've been out on Barney this summer, um, up to Harrison once this summer. So if they, if the dispatch center sends me, that's where I go, because there's a thing in the state statute called mutual aid. And once they call that, that gives me all the authority of the agency that is requesting. And if one of my brothers or sisters is in trouble, or if something's going on, we're not gonna leave somebody hanging if we're the closest people.
Of course.
Okay, go ahead, raise your hand.
Maria Marcelo. First of all, Christine, thank you for all of your research, all of your efforts. And you're clearly sincere about what you're doing here. I appreciate it. The town of Ennis, with respect to a lot of things, I'll just talk about law enforcement, is already behind the eight ball. To put it off, to see if your mill levy could be successful, is ludicrous in my mind. When is the point that you take responsibility for representing the people that vote you in, taking care of them, you have the means to do it? I know it's sketchy about whether or not the ARPA money is okay or not. One report says that you maybe shouldn't. Another one says, yes, it fits. Clearly, there's a gray area. You're willing to take a leap of faith to wait and see? What, what's gonna happen during that time when you're waiting to see? We don't know. We can't predict it. We don't know what's coming down the pike. This community has grown by leaps and bounds. We've all seen it. We need more law enforcement, and we need it at the earliest possible date. You have an opportunity to make it happen. It's incumbent upon you to make it happen. There are two of you that want to remain on this council. I think if you have any hope of that happening, you will make this happen.
State your name, please.
CJ Feldman. I live at, uh, seven Northfield Court, uh, Caviar. Uh, you know, I was in law enforcement for a few years back in Virginia, and I've seen these issues come up a lot. It depends on where you put public safety. You know, do you put public safety below infrastructure? I think public safety, especially with where this town is growing, needs to be put on a higher rung on the ladder. If, if John is running through Harrison and down Barney Road by request of the sheriff's office, what's gonna happen in the town if we need enforcement here in the town? When John's sitting up at Harrison, the sheriff's office is short-staffed as it is right now. I know in Virginia, we, we required, uh, one deputy for every fifteen hundred citizens in the county. And that included the towns. We had two towns in the county. Regardless of how much coverage, if the town said they needed more deputies, the sheriff was, was locked in handcuffs. He couldn't request any more from the state because they had already funded him based on the number of people in the county. So I, I think we need to get, you know, a head start here and get somebody here in town to help John and, and get him or her on the street before we fall behind the eight ball, which we probably pretty much have.
State your name, please.
Nicole Fredson. Um, I don't live in the town, so I can't vote on anything regarding to the town, but I do have a kid in school. And I'll repeat, as everybody has said, this town, this, this is a COVID relief situation here. People are fleeing to Ennis from all over the country. I mean, it's ridiculous. So this is a COVID emergency. And knowing that we've got police coverage in town, if, excuse the term, shit should go down at the school, I wanna know that my kid is safe. And she's a teen driver, you know, scares the crap out of me. I wanna know that we've got coverage. So, you know, I mean, it, we need to do it now instead of waiting. You can't live on what-ifs. Um, our country is in a major state of emergency, and we gotta, we gotta look at our safety, the way we're going. So we gotta act now. And, you know, God's will, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna work out, but you gotta start somewhere.
Nicole, what's your last name?
Uh, Fredson of R E D.
I'm sorry, I'm in MacArthur.
Um, I'm in, uh.
Depot Road.
Depot Road.
Thank you.
Station, please.
Me, Noni Lupki. Um, I live out on Gravelly Range Road. I, since we pay for the school mill levies and those sort of things because it's an entire school district, why can't you, I, I mean, I would happily pay a mill levy towards law enforcement to help these guys get out anywhere they need to go and make sure that the town's taken care of in the meantime. So why can there not be some investigation of creating a law enforcement district or some other way to work it around? Because I can't imagine that anybody out, out our way would willfully pay a mill levy.
Yeah.
John, I was wondering too, like, Friends of the Library for Karen, could you do that with the Ennis Police Department and get donations or no?
Yes. No, it's very, it has to be for specific equipment or specific something, and the funds have to be anonymous.
So it couldn't go for payroll and stuff like that if we did fundraising? Okay.
Too much, too much of a call for the interest.
Oh, yeah. Oh, right. Okay. Write more tickets, though.
Kind of leads towards what other small communities in, in Montana have done, like Three Forks, like Superior. Um, and what they have, like Joliet, is that they had a small, um, police force running up against the same issues. And what they decided to do was to contract with the county, and then their officers became county deputies. And so they basically pooled their resources together to, to provide more comprehensive coverage for the entire community instead of saying, okay, well, here's our district here, whatever. That is what several small communities have done.
And it's very expensive, right?
Yeah, I, it just depends on what you want to do and, and collaborate, so.
So we would have to pay that, and like Cory's brought up Three Forks, because they contract with Gallatin, they have a code enforcer. So then you're paying another officer too. I, I don't know the.
The internet, and it's, and Three Forks. The internet, and it's, and Three Forks reworked, they had a contract for three years and then they went back and redid their contract for three years. There just seems to be that we need to think outside the box on that as well. And how, because we are growing, but a lot of our growth is on the outside of Ennis. And, and that's-
So, well, does that, does that make John County Sheriff, is that what you're suggesting?
Not suggesting that, I'm just saying that's what other communities have done.
Here's, here's my comment on that. I, I love a deputy's death and my brothers and sisters, I would die for them, literally. Uh, however, um, what happens is if you, if, if, let's just say I go over to the sheriff's department and we eliminate the police department, you lose your local police department. It's the same thing as Sheridan, it's the same thing as everywhere else. That means that I'm taking a dog barking complaint up in Pony when something's happening in Ennis if I'm, if I'm the mass deputy. You don't have somebody. We, our census, we're over a thousand people already this year. Uh, we're thousand twenty- Thousand twenty-five. Uh, so, we, we're growing and, you know, pretty, I'm willing to bet by the next census, we're gonna be required to be a third-class city.
I thought we are a third-class city.
No, so, we have the option to become a third-class city up until thirteen hundred. After thirteen hundred, we are required to be a third-class city.
Yeah.
So, we, we're, we're getting there.
Larry?
Uh, Larry Klein, I live in town. Do you guys know how, what is the amount that the levy would be for? And what would the average taxpayer, how much would that be?
And I think that would be something that we would need to figure out. Cause at, at that point, if you're going for a mill levy, do you just wanna add one officer that only still gets you only to eighty-six hours out of the hundred and sixty-eight hours? Or do you wanna do more, have four officers to cover, you know, so you, or, yeah, to-
Did you do any of the math on a mill levy yet?
What's that?
Did you do any of the math on it? No.
Yeah, so.
Because the mills just changed this year, so I have, I, I could tell it to you last year, but it would be way off just because nothing, everything changed this year and I haven't done, I had to do the calculation.
I also feel like it's a bad time with the mill levies. I do kinda feel like if we're gonna do this, we gotta do it. But I don't think it's a good time for the mill levies cause I think ambulance is coming, school's coming, and you, it would all be on the May third.
I don't know if the ambulance is going.
They were on the county commissioner meeting today.
Oh, were they?
Do you have one more, do you have one more officer? Just as a rough number.
I, Larry, I honestly-
Seventy-nine thousand.
Salary, you know.
Seventy-nine thousand.
Well, the, I, well, I mean, how much is, are you just asking for how much one officer?
For another officer, including benefits, if you split the benefits.
That's the whole thing.
That's not insurance too.
Liability insurance goes up quite a bit, I don't know.
Uh, it would, I don't know how much it would go up, but liability insurance is based on our payroll. So, if our payroll goes up, our insurance goes up. And then it would-
I assume, I assume an employee's officer would be more than just that.
No, not with MIA.
It's just based, it's the same, it's based on payroll. But then it would take, I mean, not, maybe not this year, but we would then have to look at, you know, vehicle. I mean, we got, we got a new vehicle because the Crown Vic is the Crown Vic, you know? Like, it's, um, so, yeah, so, so it's eighty dollars for officer with benefits, whatever. Then there's also training and vehicle, um, and that, that stuff goes up too.
Or I'm trying to get an understanding, what is, what is the cost?
Per taxpayer.
It's a hundred eighty thousand and a mill levy is twenty-two dollars per person.
Yeah.
Maybe we should be moving forward after, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah. And it depends on, I guess it depends on what kind of coverage, like I was saying, the community wants. Do they want just one more officer? Do they want full coverage? Do they want twenty-four-seven coverage?
Three officers.
And I don't know if that is something, if you put out through a survey before, or you give people options on the mill levy?
Uh, you, you can't do and give people options on the mill levy. It's, it's voted yes or no.
Yeah.
So, it would have to be a lot of community engagement to find out.
Yeah, to kinda give a survey before whether people wanna add one more officer or two more.
Based on what I've talked to, talked to many people, um, you know, their comments have been within reason. We'll pay it as long as we get law enforcement. I, I mean, I've already done some unofficial research on that.
I think we just need that number. What was your number from last year? How much would-
I, I don't remember, I didn't even pull those up.
Okay, cause it would be, well, yeah, I guess I'm taxable to others.
Yeah, it could be totally different now.
I mean, I was just looking for a ballpark.
I'm not even gonna venture to say, sorry.
John, sorry, John, can I ask you one more question? If, is there a way to pare the budget now, things that, I don't wanna say, like sightings, the sighting for the, that they did for the, are there things that we can take out of the budget now so that we can look good for this, for this grant in the future?
No, they can go back, they can go back five years on it, Larry. But if they're showing, if they're showing that the police department uses the ARPA funds, this is what we're being told. So, it's showing that we use the ARPA funds to keep the position. When I turn in the grant, there's a big, one of the first questions, it says, are, are anybody in potential of losing their job or have, or, or being, um, ripped or, you know, laid off due to a cutting budget? Well, yes, it is, because we're out of the ARPA fund. That's one of the first questions and that's one of the ones that bumps you right up to the top of the pile.
Right, I think in the, what I'm getting at is five thousand dollars, it doesn't seem like a lot of money to pay.
It was, it's a total, it's a total of everything, yeah. And I don't know, they, they don't lay it out for us. The lady that I talked to was just very nice and pointed out a few things to me that, that raised red flags to them.
I guess, yeah, I guess my question is, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. Bancroft, go ahead.
The townspeople years ago voted, voted to have our own officer. Let's stop bullshitting everybody and do something about it. Everything goes up, I don't care what it is, everything goes up. Let John have whatever funds he needs, minus anything for the wealth.
Right.
And go from there. And when, if it comes up to a mill levy, it's you, a lot of you people, I know you're not all in Ennis, but the majority of people in Ennis voted to have this done. And I bet you the majority of people in Ennis would vote to do a mill levy to retain the officer after he's trained and on duty.
You're right.
Period.
Hang on a second, ladies.
Yeah, Lisa, Lisa was gonna say something.
No, that's okay.
Casey, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Casey Fredson, um, I go to the public school here, I have two jobs in town. And yes, our town's growing and a lot of it's outside town, but our school is also. We have thirty new kids within our entire school, which is a lot. We need more help to our school because we want that safety in our school. We feel safe with having officer more there and have another officer in town that would help benefit our school overall. And I mean, if we keep on saying, what if it fails, what if it succeeds? You know, we have to just go for it and not just let it, let it fail. Because if we don't go for it, nothing's going to get done.
My little wall. If you take into consideration, if there's no frivolous spending, such as parliaments, take into consideration the sheriff's money is gonna go up. Take that in combination, that's a heck of a start for another officer. So, what's the problem? I'm, I'm agreeing with them. But if you have a problem with a decision, put it on a vote.
That's what, that's what we're saying, that's what we're saying.
That's what we're saying, instead of just giving him ninety thousand, put it to a vote, some money's there.
That's what we're saying, is to put it to a vote.
Yeah, I'm Gordon Todd. Uh, my question is, have any of, of you councilmen and mayor taken advantage of the state's budgeting school that they offered?
No, sir, I have not.
There is a, there is a webinar that I've watched through the department administration.
Okay, cause they used to offer it as a free class up in Helena, you could go up and-
Yeah.
And they take you to budgeting school, basically, it was several days long. But you learn how to budget from either a zero-based budget, which you look at each item every year, or you do the line-by-line, the other where you just keep erasing out of the last year, carrying it forward.
Yeah.
And I personally think the zero-based budget would be the way to, to go for your budget. That's about all I have to say, that's the way we used to do it.
So, it's a different way than what we're seeing right now?
Yeah.
Yes.
I would urge you to look at this as a twofold issue. You have a short-term problem and you have a opportunity to resolve it in the long term. So, resolve it for the short term, work on resolving it for the long term, do the best you can. If nothing gets initiated, if nothing gets started, nothing's gonna happen. John, you're spot on.
All right, Trevor Lockhart, and, uh, I'm not gonna announce my address because A, it's an adult's business and B, it's not required for public comment. Just for anybody who would like to announce since they're commissioned and decide to ask you for your private information. But, um, from there, I don't live in town, but my wife and I frequent this town a lot. We are in town, a lot of you guys in this audience have met me out of town before meeting me in Laurel. And, I mean, it's growing. I've watched, my family moved over to Big Sky in ninety-six and I watched what they did over there with growth, with unregulated growth, which is why a lot of you have also seen me so adamant on the planning side of things. Ginger knows, pretty much everybody in here knows, I comb through this stuff. I spend countless hours doing stuff that I don't wanna do either. And I'm not even an elected official, I'm not even one of you guys sitting up there. I know you're in the hot seat, it's a tough place to be, but that's what it is for our city. I've heard multiple things, if you don't mind, Ginger. I've heard multiple things mentioned tonight, like the budget, the library budget. The library budget was an oversight on the first one, which we have seen. If you actually look on page seven of the new one, you can see where things like Suzie Sally and other items that I have come through when we looked through this were cut back to make up for that extra mill that they were asking. They actually ended up giving them about one point three mills. A mill and times about three thousand four hundred fifty-five bucks, they got a little over four thousand. When we reviewed our budget, how many other inaccuracies are in this budget? I mean, you look at, for instance, if we wanna talk about the budget and actually get into this, and which is why Gordon needed to mention this, because we had a long talk and he's very smart with the budget. And I would implore any of you guys to take your class on it because I myself even going through line items, just look at some stuff that makes me wonder. So, I brought one to, because it's free to member information, right here. On page three or thirty-four, uh, four two zero, one two zero, line item, one one zero, salaries and wages for law enforcement services. Our current budget falls to seventy-two, one fifty-five, our preliminary budget was twenty-five, eight seventy-five. I says, well, what the hell, that can't be right. Where'd that forty-six, almost forty-seven thousand dollars come from? You guys wanna know where it came from? It came out of already an agreement that John Moore had made to give us forty-plus thousand dollars of that as a contingency of these grants. You know, we go down the line, everybody says it to me, they're like, oh, you don't live in town? We frequent this town, we all do, anyone that doesn't live here. When I'm in town, we just had a child last week, when I'm in town pushing our kite along the road, I worry if something's gonna happen to us. I would hate for John Moore not to be here. And for speeders, for semis running into the hotels at the end of our road, for whatever it might be. I mean, it's just, I, I honestly, it makes me like frustrated that we're even here. We've heard over and over all year, public access, how can you put a price on it? Our, our town attorney, he came on last time on, or a couple of times to go on Zoom, and those were his exact words. Well, how the heck can you put a price on public safety? I've heard other people mention it too, but you wanna talk about public access and adding more public access in town that John Moore's gonna patrol? But you have the audacity to try to cut his budget and even question his budget? It's ludicrous. You know, Casey came on here, we have this, you know, this lady just talked about how many kids added to our school just this last year. Casey actually corrected her, it wasn't thirty, it was thirty-two. Next year it might be sixty, next year it could be whatever, we don't know. Just like we don't know if John's plan will succeed. But what we do know is it's growing. In the past fif, in the past ten years in our new census, which we didn't even have a good turnout on people returning their censuses, we grew fifteen percent. We went from eight sixty-five to a thousand twenty-five, we are almost a tier-three town. That's not gonna stop, you know? Jay, to Jason's point, the town is like a business is, business needs, needs startup money. I will one hundred percent agree with you there. You know what else needs startup money? Infrastructure. You don't make a hundred percent of the shots you don't take, or you, you missed a hundred percent of the shots you don't take. You guys considering speculating on if John Moore will succeed? He's put his ass on the line, excuse my language, if it's hard to read. He's put his butt on the line to go out and put his neck out there. It doesn't matter if he succeeds at this point. If you guys either are admitting that you have faith in him to try it, or you're basically telling him that everything he's done to this point, like Mr. Bancroft just brought up, that the citizens at one point before March, even voted him in to be here for, is just negated. That you're just done with it, you know, whatever. I mean, we talk about, you know, page sixteen, for instance, we look at training and military budgets for, or, uh, training and police budgets for, for tier-three towns and less. They just upped it from five thousand dollars to sixty-five hundred dollars. The, the state and the, the county sees that we need more police. I've talked for hours, there's Phil Fortner on the phone, you know how much? They, they patrol over thirty-six hundred square miles. As John said, John said one, but Phil's actually looking for two deputies. He can't find anybody, he's had ads out there for eight and nine months at a time. He, you guys haven't even asked him, which to me, again, is why we're even talking about this, is just asinine because Montana Annotated Code says any municipality has to have a police force, whether that's local or shared. That's not anything we're getting around, that's a, that's Montana state statute. Uh, the low bids that Sheriff Phil would give you, if any of you guys wanted to actually put a proposal together or ask him for a contract are between two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars a year, if he can even get the staff for it. Right now, Madison County alone is averaging almost seventy percent of his calls. Of the, just, just right here, from Norris to basically Barney Bridge, is what he joked about. But he didn't put a magazine too, but anyways, but just that area, you talk about, we got Shining Mountains people in here, we've got Easty Ranches people in here, we have friends all up on the golf course, uh, or same thing, you know? And that's, I mean, that's crazy to me, it's just, you know, to pay, to worry if we're gonna have to come up with seventy-nine thousand dollars versus to worry that we lose John Moore and have to pay two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars for the, you guys worry about tax money. This gentleman asks about tax money, how much is three hundred thousand gonna cost your town residents? As, or even us county, as, like I said, my wife and I live in county. How much is that gonna cost us when you go up triple what John's asking for? I mean, it's just crazy that we're even at this point. As John said, Ennis pays the, Ennis pays the county right now for dispatch only. It's on a very great agreement that they have. And Phil will talk to you guys about this for hours, he doesn't want anything to do with Ennis. I hate to say it, but we already given up enough business and he will, as gladly will tell you that, at least. Um, everybody's brought up Sheridan. Sheridan, that was grandfathered in with the previous sheriff, is one that Phil wishes he could get. It's a thorn in his side. On average yearly, he runs an eighty thousand dollar deficit for the county just patrolling Sheridan alone by them voting against the police force. Eighty thousand, that's, that's what, that's a thousand more than John's even asking for. That the county, that then would get put on us county residents and us people that do live outside of town but still greatly support this awesome town and have moved here and planted our roots here. I mean, you've come through all this other stuff, you look at everything else and it's like, you know, I heard Lisa, I heard you talk about talking to the DOA, that Manhattan Misty, I think you said? And I talked to Misty also and she referred me to some great people who are amazing governor, GM Forte appointed, to do direct control of the ARPA money. And I really, I have their phone numbers for you, you can ask them my name, we've had long conversations. I really think you should ask them about that, about employing someone new in their opinion, not just Misty. Because even when I talk to Misty, you know, you can ask the questions you want them to be answered. But even her, infrastructure and starting things, not pet projects like parks or whatever it might be, not that, infrastructure is key in what these COVID bills are for. Leanna Taylor, I will gladly, she's an amazing person, and Mike Foster, her boss, are the ones that GM Forte has put in charge of doing all these ARPA funds. I encourage any of you on this board to call and ask them what you can use that money for and if it is for hiring an employee, because that's another thing that we've heard tonight that supposedly isn't an accuracy, but it's not. You are more than welcome to hire an officer, you're more than welcome to hire something uncertain. Nothing's certain in life, we already know that. But I would encourage any of you and after this, most of you know me, like I said, but please, come up, ask me, because I would love to share these people's info with you and we are only gonna continue growing. There's about, you know, twenty other line items in here that we're, we could easily cut some fat to save the least in this town right now. I, I am not even gonna get into that because I, I see other people here wanna talk, but I mean, forty-nine thousand, fifteen thousand, for, I mean, it's, it's crazy what's in there. Most people wouldn't even look at. For, uh, just one, I'll just give a basic one, just fishing for out alone, forty-nine thousand. Our two thousand seventeen, I think for that was four thousand, you know? You wanna talk about master plan, you wanna talk about fishing for out, master plan? Well, get, get, you know, and, and vision and everything else that we've done, like, we need a police force for that. We all wanna grow, we've been in here talking about growing. I showed up last week to listen to Josh talk about his development in the North Forty, like, that's great. That's exactly what we need. I didn't like the tight restrictions on the other one, but that's irrelevant, you guys voted. You guys have, and we were just counting the people, you have sixteen to nineteen that's been fluctuating online and thirty- You guys have, and we were just counting the people, you have sixteen to nineteen that's been fluctuating online and thirty, what did I count? Thirty three in the room right now. You talk about a representation of what your town wants and who is here. I, I think it's a pretty good cross section, you know? I mean, the people want safety. We want to take the risk. And, you know, you guys are elected officials and have that tough spot, because if it does fail and it comes back down on you guys, yes. It's, there will probably be these same people here with pitchforks next year saying, hey, you guys keep funding the police. But if it doesn't, then, you know, that's, I, I personally, and I think that's why everybody else took time out of their Tuesday night to show up here, this is the main Thursday meeting, like, I think people are passionate about this and we're only growing and we just, we can't, the public safety, you can't put a price on. I'll just leave it at that.
Uh, you know, so I guess in all of this thing, and the other thing that keeps coming to mind that, that we discussed earlier in the summer, um, is the three percent that will be available for the recreational marijuana types. And then what kind of effect is that going to have on John's coal volume? I was on the ambulance for fifteen years and I know when Shh, who's he called? I will send that word. Went, he was there. And he had our back. And there are situations in the dark where you're here standing up and you know you shouldn't be there. It was the best, you know, that he was going to be there shortly. They thought he'd be there. He saved us from seeing things that we never should see, or anybody should have to see. He knew what it was gonna be, went ahead and took care of it. And now he's asking for us to support somebody to do the same thing for him. How terrifying is it to go into one of these situations, a shooting by yourself, and yes, the county guys are coming? How long? Because I'm telling you, when you're in those situations, minutes feel like hours. So instead of, hey, that three percent can go to parks, which was the comment last time, maybe in your creative thinking and your budgeting, that can come into planning, because it's going to affect to some extent how this county operates.
One thing I wanna, before I go there, we were talking about, uh, working with the county. John and I, when I first was elected, we were paying the county forty thousand dollars a year for the same service that we're currently getting at. And for the Ennis taxpayers, for you to service with the county is a double taxation, because you already paid for a service that they are required to offer you. So if an Ennis taxpayer pays for sheriff's service, you were being double taxed at that point, because they take money from Ennis as well. So you're paying a double tax to even talk to the county. And John and I, along with Roger Thompson, got rid of that. Uh, it was the forty thousand dollars that we were able to spend in other places and the, the town payer or the town people really need to pay attention to that. County already paid that tax. But if you're in town, you'll be paying it twice at that point, because Ennis has to pay the county. Something to really keep in mind with that, and it's something that I pushed really hard to get rid of it, and John helped to get rid of it for that very reason. Double taxation is not the answer with that.
But just a quick comment on the growth. With growth comes crime and you've got pot farming and all these other things happening. And nothing like a strong police force will discourage that. It will shut it down before it happens. They'll be on the leading edge. Uh, it's no secret that, um, Ennis and Montana in general have a addiction and drug addiction problem. And, uh, the gateway drugs that lead to that, and nobody wants their child to be affected by it. So I think that you're wise to be proactive and keep a strong force. Word gets out, don't screw around in Ennis or anywhere around it. And, you know, it's helpful to everybody. Keeps kids at school safe. And they're on the leading edge. They can be watching for, you know, they're, the price of public safety is high. One way or another, either you have it or you don't. So I, I think you might want to be thinking pretty seriously about how important it is to be proactive in law enforcement around town. Ann Outwards.
Kurt Cordoso. I live in McAllister, but I also live along two eighty seven. Two eighty seven is a corridor now. It's a corridor for sex trafficking. It's a corridor for drug movement. We need to have more in-town police, so maybe an officer can't be making more stops on cars that look suspicious. Maybe have expired tags. You can pull somebody over for the stupidest thing and pull fifty kilos of cocaine off the street. This is a prime example of sleepy little Montana out here, and you don't think the cartels have figured that out? We had a vehicle dumped off at the airport. By the time a deputy got there, those people were gone. Too late. So response time is everything. And if we can't find the funding for a second officer, but we can spend god knows how much money on law firms for access to a river that we got plenty of access to already, just because it's a pet project for one or two people? That's ridiculous. This is life or death at this time. Crime rate is up, domestic violence is up, suicide is up, everything is up. We got one officer who's given forty three hours a week. Come on. I listened to dispatch, county dispatch. You know how long it takes for a deputy to get to a call or return a call? Yeah, like Nikki said, minutes go for hours. I'd hate to be that person making a phone call and somebody's kicking at my door and I'm unarmed. That man is five minutes from anything in town, and so would another officer. The county will not put a officer in the school, will not put a deputy in there. Can't spend a two and a half hour to get in there? It's precious. I wish we could have him in there more, and maybe with some more coverage, he could spend a little more time. These are things we need to look at. The money's not an issue. The federal government's gonna fund it. We may as well take it before the whole damn bottom falls out on this whole country. That's all I got to say.
By the way, sorry, sheriff doesn't supply a, uh, they don't have a school resource officer even in their payroll.
Exactly.
On their staff, and they won't. So if John's gone, there's nobody in our schools, even if we bring resources on.
And let me add this. If we got a council that's not gonna back him, what's gonna make him stay? Are we gonna find another officer? We can't find one to work underneath John, let alone one that takes all the crap he's getting right now. He's done his labor work. Give it to him. Let him have it. If it fails, it fails. It rests on his shoulders, not yours. If we can't find the funding for an officer, you know what? Officers transfer all the time. Big cities are releasing their officers. You think they wouldn't like to come to a little town like Ennis? Get it together. Good God. A lot of this conversation today is just absolutely ridiculous. What if, what if? I live in what ifs. I walk through them. Maybe you guys ought to try it too.
You know, I guess my only comment is listening to all, all the stuff that's going on. At least I heard you make your comments. Let's get creative. I, I would urge you, I mean, I, I'm one of the guys that has discussed it with government. I'm on the school board now. When people elected me, they elected me to do, make decisions, whether they're right or wrong. We need to make decisions. That's what we're elected for. I, I'm tired of people in our positions kicking this stuff down the road. I mean, it's, there's an urgency here. And, and I don't, I don't want this going for another two years before we come up with something that might work. I mean, I really, really think that we kick this in the butt now instead of down the road.
That's exactly right. So is the school board gonna? The school board has the capacity and the budget to add a school resource officer?
Uh, I, I'm not gonna speak for the school board, but we will bring that up. That, that is gonna be, like, just in the conversations I've had today, there are some options. Not that they're, I'm one guy, just like you guys.
Yeah.
But you can go to the county. So at least the school board, we go to the county and get funding.
Yeah.
Whereas we are outside of the city limits, that school is all of us. So my kid's thirteen years there, and Officer Moore helped him immensely. So we, we matter regardless of whether we're outside of town.
And on that note, the school is, the school is in city limits. It is my responsibility during the day. And so are all of our kids, because my daughter's over there also. So that is, that is why I spend so much time over there, because it is the number one industry in this town. I mean, you've got close to five hundred people, if you include staff and you include the, the students there now. That, that is the biggest thing right over there.
It means, it is our town. Really.
The only thing that we need to look at with
officer in training, uh, stay at the school while you're on a car.
Nope. So while he's in field training, he has to be with another officer. It's a, it's a whole liability issue.
And then one thing that would make me nervous and, uh, I know a lot of the council members don't agree with me. I think John doesn't spend enough time that the police purr at the school itself. What happens when we're gonna have a school shooting at one point or time? We have one in Rigby. We're so close and it just keeps moving towards us. It's all over. If I had my way, I'd have him in the school more. I've been the biggest proponent of him being in the school. Half of our population is in that school during the day. So anyone that questions his time in school, uh, he doesn't go there as much as I would like him to. Unfortunately, he has a whole town, and that's where a second officer really makes a lot of sense here. But I don't, we don't want to be that town that's on the news for that. And he's developed relationships with several of the students, the parents, the staff, and when half of my town is sitting at that school, that's where he needs to be.
There was, what, was it two thousand eighteen, the school was on lockdown?
For that, yeah, okay.
And that, that's when I started realizing there was a very large gap between, I, I had a good relationship with, with Brian Hilton at the time, uh, but that was it. And it made it very difficult to maneuver through that whole thing, because we didn't have a good working relationship. Now, every year we do a school safety plan. We have school safety means. We plan this out. I do their Alice training, which is the alert lockdown counter and evacuate. Uh, we do tourniquet training with them. All the classrooms have buckets with tourniquets and survival stuff in there. They do have to be locked down, basically. We, we make sure that those teachers are trained to take care of our kids.
But, but, but again, in my seat, in my shoes, when does that become a resource officer, not a police officer? When does the school pitch into the budget?
Which is, just one second, Kristy.
Well, I'm just saying budgetary wise and everything wise. When do things?
Into a meeting to, uh, to secure the funds from the school. The conversation's been started. We had something in place before COVID and we pushed it back. It's a five thousand dollar, I believe. Is that right? Right in that area that the school supplies to the town for the services that he does. A lot of money, but it is something and it's a start. Uh, the conversation, that was a number that was thrown out, and I'm sure the school board will be hearing about that at this next meeting. So, I mean, it's one of those things where the school is trying to kick in and help with the issue.
My name's Mike Delaney. Um, I don't think you could find many people that probably wouldn't support having another police officer in town. And I don't think anybody here is against it, in the audience, that is. And when the young lady comes from school and voices her concern, I probably, I probably think you probably wouldn't find any students that would be against it either. Parents, uh, you know, the town is growing. We've talked about being proactive in other areas with water and annexation and all these other things. And this is public safety. This is the A number one mission of the council. And, and what they're here for. And the public outcry is, we would like to have another officer, whether it be in the school, on patrol, for response, for growth. Everybody that lives around here in McAllister or wherever, Cameron, they all come here. So the thousand people that live here, double it every day. Double it every day. That's a thousand people if we count it, that is. But what about the tourists? I mean, this is a, a number one tourist spot now. As we saw last year, everybody that could get out of the house in an RV came to Ennis, Montana, and half of them bought property. That is not a stretch, and they're, and they're gonna build here. They may not build in Ennis. They probably won't build in Ennis, because they bought the property just outside of Ennis. But guess what? They're gonna come to Ennis every day. You know, the congestion, the, the tourism, the Airbnbs, all over the place. You know, uh, which brings in people that want to have a good time. Guess what they're gonna do? Go to the grocery store and fill up their cart full of beer. You know, and, and what happens then? No telling. You know, John can't keep up with all those guys, you know, all those people coming here. And it's great that they come here, you know? I think a lot of businesses thrive from it. Business owners, I would, if I was a business owner here, I'd want more law enforcement as well. Anybody that doesn't want law enforcement, you gotta kind of question why. You know, that's, that's, you know, back when I was eighteen, I would probably vote against, uh, law enforcement. An irresponsible fool, but, but, you know, a little bit of experience and better judgment now says common sense is, we need another law enforcement officer. And, and we need to start now and not wait. And, and John, thank you, John, for all the work you've done.
How can you deny the guy? Thank you. I'm actually, I closed public comment. Now, I think I've gotten pretty much, uh, where we need to go here. I want to just, uh, I put these budgets together for the council to scrutinize, and people have given them a lot of grief over this. That's what they're elected to do, is to ask the questions. And that's what these folks have done. To have scrutiny to them is really not fair. They're doing what they're supposed to do. They're supposed to ask these questions. And obviously, they need to ask the questions. If they don't ask the questions, everyone's coming and saying, why didn't you do this? Why didn't you do this? Uh, I, Ginger and I have put this budget together and we feel like it was the best budget out there. It is their responsibility to ask the questions though. And please keep in mind that they're doing their very best and we need to not attack them. They're doing their job and they're asking the questions that need to be asked. Whether they're the popular questions, uh, decisions or not, the questions have to be asked. You guys are asking the same questions that they're asking. And now with that, let's go back to comment amongst you guys. As far as what you'd like to do with that.
So I guess my, uh, comment is currently with the ARPA funds, insurance, and the designated, um, police budget, we're at about two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And that, um, gets us to eighty, eighty-six hours of coverage. Um, and so, um, when it's brought up, since someone else brought it up, you know, contracting with the county would be two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. But that is for twenty-four hour coverage, seven days a week. So, um, so I guess if we are, you know, looking at full coverage, once you add in vehicles, you're probably looking at five, probably five hundred thousand dollars to get that covered. I'm gonna go back, uh, to my statement that, um, it was Perry that I talked with at the Department of Administration. It's not about what was allowable. It was about what was a smart fiscal decision. And that is what we're elected to do. It's make smart fiscal decisions in, in response to what we have. And that is what is, are we gonna be having this discussion next year? I would really like to see it go to the voters, because then they can decide, um, you know, and put, and make their voices heard. And that's what I would like to see.
I'm not gonna let that go.
No, 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 no. You guys spent a bunch of money on a law firm to go after a private property owner, but when it comes to public safety, we can't do nothing about it.
Right. We're not saying we can't do anything about it.
You didn't go to the voters about spending taxpayer funds to go after a private property owner. Now you want to take it to voters on some other issues. This is where we're at. This is why we're frustrated. But you need to stop now. Thank you. It can't go unchecked, Blake. It can't go unchecked. Can you clarify though, that, that if we go to the county, we'll have twenty-four seven service in the town of Ennis?
We would have to.
And that's where they're gonna call it before, or anytime they get to speak.
And the county's not even joining the school.
Well, that is.
No public comment now. This is commissioner time. Okay, what we need, uh, in my opinion, I think we need to maintain the current budget that I have and move on with, uh, and move on with the mill levy as well. This is a two-prong or three-prong attack where we, and this is my opinion, and this is probably what I'm going to leave in the budget for you guys to vote on. I've heard what people said, the ARPA money will stay as is. If you guys choose to vote against it, that is your right, and we will have that vote. I think we allow him to, and this is my opinion, and I'll continue listening, but this is what I'm thinking. We leave it there so he can go get the grants, we go after the mill levy at the same time. We can start the process of doing that. We'll have the mill levy, and we'll know by May whether or not we have this issue. We can hire, if we can find an officer, hire an officer with the knowledge that his job is contingent on funding. It is something that we can do, there's no reason not to do it at this point in time. Regardless of what we do, we're six to nine months before we have another officer. If we don't get this started soon, we're going to be down a rabbit hole.
Could we have the mill levy before the budget vote? Or?
No, no.
No, because we have to vote on the mill levy for a police department, right?
Make a motion to start the process to get a mill levy?
So I think we have to approve the mill levy, the verbiage before it's-
Yeah, so if you agree or not, I will get you, I will work with Jim, and we'll get the verbiage and figure out the costs and everything.
I'd like to have that before the budget vote.
That's in two days.
That's in two days, that's physically impossible.
So we have longer than two, in two days.
Spend the ARPA money.
Vote on the budget.
Yes and no.
Till the ninth, which is-
If it doesn't pass by the ninth, what happens? The consequence is that we will be audited, and we will get a note on our audit. That is the consequence. Is a note on our audit. So, I think it would be helpful to have those numbers as well, too, is to figure out. It should be based upon that, it should be with our taxable value to give. To answer Larry's question as to what type of, you know, and maybe we can tier it as vote, as adding one officer, adding two additional officers, having a full staff of four officers. So then we can have a clearer picture of what that will look like for the taxpayers. I think that's fair for them to know what's going to be proposed as well.
But we can get an officer started and start those questions. And when it goes to the mill levy, then we can put that out there. And if the voters say that they want more, then we can add more at that point in time. But for us to wait any longer to start another officer is irresponsible of us now. And that's my, in my opinion, you guys are the ones that actually vote on it. You're the ones that have to live with what you vote with. I just put this out to put it out there.
Sure, fair enough.
I think the sheriff says he doesn't have the officers to provide us.
So what if we can't hire an officer either?
Okay, we have one, you can't-
Then we don't spend the money.
Where's my chain of thought on that one?
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Well, I just feel like we can't just go on a promise. You know, we've had a lot of things slip through the cracks before, right? So let's get the mill levy going, at least I want to see it.
How long can we, how long until, can I have that put together, a mill levy worded out?
I have absolutely no idea, because I'll have to call the county and find out. And for the verbiage, that'll be with Jim, and that'll be in his leisure, right?
I think we can get the numbers fairly easy to know, as far as in a reasonable timeframe. To know, like, okay, if you want to raise $216,000 with your current tax base, this is what it would cost. So that should be, for the treasurer's office, that should be a fairly simple-
Easy question.
An easy question for them. So, so I think, you know, I can call Shelley Burke tomorrow and maybe try to figure that out to see as well. So, that is where-
Also, we can do a budget amendment, so it wouldn't hurt to pass the budget.
Just leave those funds frozen in that line item. That's what I was thinking.
Can I make one more? So if we hired this officer, I would like the council to work on the contract. That it is for one, that it's for one and only year. And essentially, it is for three months because it's going to take up to nine months to get someone. So essentially, this contract will be for 12 months of employment. I just wanted to make it very clear to the candidate that's taking the position that the funding could end.
And they get a, by state law, I'm required to give them a job offer letter. In that job offer letter, it will be clearly stated, if they wish to accept the job, they sign that letter in presence of me, and I'm the witness, so therefore, I mean, you can even get it notarized if you want. But it's very clear, that it's very simple to do.
Is that one of those things where we would hand that over to Jim, maybe, and have him write that up for us?
That it doesn't come back around to haunt us, too, that's like, there's a lot to this.
And then we can review it before it's offered out. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think, yes.
And keep in mind, you can terminate the law enforcement officer within the year of probation for any reason whatsoever, without cause.
There's a year of probation?
Yes, state law.
Okay.
But I want, I want to make sure that whoever we hire, or if we're able to hire someone, knows exactly what it is. I don't want to just say, sorry, I want them to be aware of what the possibilities are.
Oh, and I can, believe me, I completely agree with that.
And then on the other, on the other allotment, I would like a workshop on those ARPA funds, too. On the things that we can do. We could potentially, I know the well is a priority, but you've also brought up heating the Lions Club bathrooms, so those can be utilized year-round.
They have to be done with the state, the state runs that thing.
Well, they contract with us to run it, we receive the funds, and then-
We receive the funds to pay the young lady who cleans it and for the supplies, and that's all we're getting.
Yeah.
And if they want, if they want, if you want a full-time bathroom, it has to be approved by the state, we have to put in a bigger propane tank because it's a joke what they have down there. It's going to cost a lot of money.
Yeah.
But the state should be helping us more.
Yeah, well, I think if it is year-round, we get more funds for that. So that is something that we could look at, too, and potentially adding, you know, when I talked to the Chamber of Commerce, one of their longtime wishlist items, which is directly related to COVID, is another set of bathrooms in downtown. So that has been a long, long time wishlist item for them, so.
We have a lot of priorities.
I know.
But we just have to put them in lines.
And that's why I would, yeah, I would like to get actual numbers on those and to figure those out. Also, the library, their outside seating is directly related to COVID as well. They are now waiting on their neighbor to figure out if they had ARPA funding to go ahead and complete their outside seating project. They can get that done, which is a community service, which is, they run fabulous programs out of the library. I would just like to see ideas come before us and to vet those ideas. You have actual numbers to what those would cost, and then we can prioritize them. Because, yeah, maybe the library only needs $6,000 or $8,000 to complete. Right now, they're hogtied by their neighbor, who has become unresponsive, because they said that they would work.
I don't think he's been unresponsive. You've already talked to the person, and they're going to, they're going to plant shrubbery and whatnot alongside of both buildings.
So as far as the landscaping project, they have been unresponsive?
So you just said-
Unresponsive.
They've been unresponsive. And so, so I just think that there are, this one-time, one-time allocation of funds, one-time allocation of funds. I think there, we should just talk more about it, how it should be distributed so it has a community, you know.
I'm not against that, and just for, and I'm not sure, Anne was here last time. With that, 174 plus the 225, water has got $463,000 allocated to a well. I'm not sure what the price on that is, and I think that's really high. Plus, he's got a big excess in the water, and I'm sure that-
Yeah. On, I mean, Kelly and I talked about this a little bit, and when he was asking questions on budget back and forth. And just a statement that he made was that everyone would be very, very shocked at how fast a million dollars can be swallowed up.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
And we didn't understand that, but it-
You know, so, I mean, so he is bugging for every bit of that ARPA money that's on at this point in time. But, no, we have not gotten any figures on what anything's going to cost to be done.
Because I'm not mistaken, Anne said that he still needed to find the information out when he was here last week.
Yeah, and I think that was based on the hydrology report and everything else on that. But there are other grant opportunities when it comes to water and sewer. There's the Treasure State Endowment Program, there are other, the Big Sky Trust Fund, yes.
We do need to be looking at-
Sure.
What we're charging for water and sewer.
Yes, I think we have collectively asked that for probably two years.
You have two years.
So with that being said, the 174 is sitting there where we could do that. But also, keep in mind, we have a budget surplus of 133 that we can allocate as we need to as well. So we, you're seeing really strong right now as far as what we've got.
My question to that is, Ginger, has the hospital been paid for the funds that we were allocating to the hospital?
Has the hospital been paid?
Yes.
No. No.
I think that's-
That's, that is sitting strictly in ambulance, so.
Okay, okay.
So that is, is not an issue.
I think we need to get that paid, because I think that was a promise we made back in May, is that not only the equipment transfer, but also that cash gift to the ambulance district.
Okay, and I'll go, I'll go over that, you can interview tomorrow.
But it-
So what do you think, Ginger, before, on page 24?
Of expenditures?
Yes, please say. I'm just trying to think of how we can, we need to make sure that it is used properly, and he's listed a number of projects that are there. We won't need all of that, but we need to come up with a little bit of funding where we maybe take that out of the professional services and put it more as a-
If there's a general, or if there is, you know, to that ARPA funding, is there a generalized item that you can put, like, so, for instance, out of the general account, under licenses and permits, you have line number 322020 for general? Can we put that under an object code in ARPA?
Just leave it on page 24? Is that what you're saying?
So where did you come up with 322?
It's on the very first page, I guess, revenue budget, or, yeah, the revenue report. That, I was on page number one of the revenue budget.
Yeah.
And so can you give it the object code?
Oh, the 322020?
Yeah. Can you give that, can you do that in expenditures under general?
I'm going to check that.
Okay.
But we'll leave that more wide open to be able to do some of these other projects. And we don't need all of that, but we can take some of it and use it for some of these other projects that fit under the ARPA restrictions. And then that can still leave some for Kelly, because like I said, with ARPA money, Kelly's got $463,000. Plus, if you look at the water and sewer budget, he's got close to a million on both sides to-
Not anything you forget in your jacket.
That are, that can be allocated, plus grant money and whatnot.
Is there a way to move, make a notation on the, we take that ARPA money, put it over to law enforcement?
So it looks like a-
It's just like, like we did, when you said, you know, you have that Black Mountain software notation or other stuff. You know, you have notations under that in law enforcement. Can you put a notation or some kind of line item that reflects the true budget of the law enforcement? And is there a way to add insurance to each of the designated departments so we have a clear reflection as to what-
I can do a breakdown for you.
Yeah, I would just like it to see that, you know, for administration, because you have salaries and wages, compensated absence, employer contribution. It would nice, be nice to have an insurance breakdown number there as well.
I can do it as I know.
Yes, okay, or just to know that, you know, out of, you know, that's how much insurance out of the administration. And the same for the rest of the departments as well.
Like break it up so it shows how much each department's getting for insurance instead of just one lump sum?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I can make notes on this.
Okay.
Or I can give you that schedule separately.
Okay, so, well, could you do both? Could you do the schedule and then make a notation, and so then we can have a way to cross-reference?
So let me throw it down.
I'm going, yeah, I mean, I will tell you exactly where, like, each account.
Yeah, so I mean, so if you have, so out of the insurance thing, you can say, you know, administration, public works, whatever, down there, and then you take that number, whatever that number is, whatever, $4,000. And if it's in administration, can you just make a note in administration that insurance is X amount of dollars?
X amount of dollars.
So it's just a way to cross-reference both, so.
Yep, yep.
And it's easier to read for everybody.
That 322020 will not work.
Okay.
I'm not sure how that got changed, but the 322020 is business licenses.
I was wondering.
Okay, so we can search up-
I'm not sure how that got changed, but let me look at account numbers.
Okay, to the object code, see if there's a way.
And see where I can come up with.
Yeah.
And how do you want this broke out monetarily?
By, do you do it by percentage? Is that how you usually do it?
Well, I'm talking, you know, I'm talking back to the ARPA-
I can think you can just-
You're having me add a line item, so where am I taking from and what am I-
Can you just, because this isn't reflective of the money that we're also getting from the county? That's not anywhere here.
So you weren't-
So can you just delete 430, 530?
Right.
And put in an object code that fits, that has a general item, and then we can decide as a council?
We have time to figure out.
Yeah, I mean, one of the other, you know, things on guidelines of this, it did say, adequate time, should be taken carefully, consider all the alternatives for prudent use of ARPA funding prior to committing the resources to ensure the best use of temporary funding. So they're asking us to take our time and to do it, do it, okay? For the ARPA fund, yes.
So just go ahead and put it in as a general.
Or whatever code that is.
And then we may have to budget it in then.
Yeah, and then when, once we decide where it's all- Then we can come up with different, yes.
And we would do a budget.
So then, how are we going to proceed with the law enforcement services? Are we going to freeze that and then do a budget amendment? When we get the information on the mill levy and get that going forward?
Could that be part of the budget?
That would support what we're trying to do with the mill levy information going forward.
So we got part two taken care of, kind of, we worked that part out, but it's the first part of it.
Can we, when we approve the budget, can we do it conditionally, or in the motion? That that portion of the budget is not to be spent until?
Until?
Until we have the number, numbers on the mill levy?
Or, mill levy's in progress?
I don't think we should wait till the mill levy's in progress.
Not progress, but we have the number.
That we have the numbers gone, does that make sense, till they have the mill levy that-
What does it matter? It's, I'm just curious why that matters, to vote that, just till they have some numbers that Lisa's actually going to call tomorrow and get, so they'll have enough.
I'll, well, until I can- So I can just present them to the council and talk with Shelley? Because I want the voters to know, going into a mill levy, how much their property taxes will increase.
But they're not going to know that till, well, after you pass the ballot.
If you get something I wouldn't disclose, I'm a little confused on that. I'm an open book, I'm going to flat-out do the whole thing that says, this is what, this is what you're getting for this amount of money.
Exactly.
But I'm confused what this has to do with the- But I'm confused what this has to do with the money at all.
That was my, that would, that was my, you know, I was trying to compromise, so you wanted to go forward, I wanted to see the mill levy going forward also.
And you have my word, the mill levy will go forward.
But I can't just go off of your word.
Okay.
Whoa.
Whoa.
That speaks volumes.
I mean. You're unreasonable to me.
My god.
I just think it would be nice to know that if we were looking to raise whatever, whether it be $80,000, $100,000, what, what cost per? Hundred thousand dollars is gonna cost the taxpayers, so they have a generality. So if they get used to the service that we have, they fully understand moving into the subsequent years, this is what's gonna, it's gonna cost.
But what doesn't matter if we have it in two days or we have it in a month? I'm confused as to why, why the timeframe is so short, other than you guys are trying to hamstring me once again and just, just hold the dangle of funds with, with another stipule, in my humble opinion.
Well, if we can get the, if, if we can get the numbers by Thursday, Shelley can, if I can call and Shelley can put those numbers by Thursday, I don't think it's gonna be an issue.
You don't think? So then you're still leaving yourself an out on that.
We still have to, I'm one person, one out of five, so we still have to vote, so that is why. It's like Dino, it's one vote on the school council, I am one vote here. So based on, I will call Shelley and see if she can do those numbers tomorrow.
That's good enough, I would think. And it's all you can do, isn't it, right? You gotta get them so you know what you're dealing with.
When you set the mill levy out.
Yeah, to, to send the mill levy out, but when will you make that announcement? It doesn't matter when.
Gordon, do you?
Not till May, so we have to do some politics and it's a PR, so what I'm saying is the budget doesn't matter at this point in time.
Right.
You've got plenty of time for May of next year before you get it out.
Absolutely.
Gordon, do you think if you were in my position, you're totally for giving him the money and see what happens next year and not worry about what comes back next year as far as us getting the same backlash?
Not like you're writing John a check, it's just saying that you're committed to going forward with supporting another police officer.
Knowing we don't have the funds for it next year probably.
Well, you may have the funds now.
You will have more of a chance to get the funds if you allow these funds to go to the police department. What's so hard to grasp here? This has been a runaround all night long.
Relax, please. I understand your passion.
It's common sense, Blake.
Yeah, but this is their decision, they have to make the decision.
That's what I'd like to do.
They do, but they also have to.
Sorry, guys, go ahead.
Who pays the county?
Taxpayers.
Huh? The taxpayers. So if it's another $300,000 for the taxpayers of the county, we're gonna get levied by the county for the coverage.
So it seems to me you're gonna cut, you're gonna wait, not waste, you're gonna spend more money paying the county to cover us. So that the county doesn't have the officers to cover, so let's, so let's move forward and get the ball rolling so we can get another officer in place because you're gonna be out more money if you don't start the process now. If the county has to jump in and cover costs.
They already do that.
Right, but it's gonna start, John says that he can't promise how long. It's gonna start costing the town more money for the county to cover, so why not?
I've had conversations with Phil too, I have talked to Phil too. And Phil has never brought up that they're gonna start charging us because we don't have another officer coming. And that's just what my.
Can I ask him directly?
Okay, John, I'm not gonna argue with you, John.
Another what if?
Hey. No, it sounds to me, guys, I don't think it's gonna work, I'm not gonna, but you guys gotta be responsible. You see, you can't just say, well, what about this? You've gotta approve this budget and then we go to the mill levy. We can't, we can't, we can't put half in front of this vote, you're voting on a budget here, and I, I would just like the council to be responsible.
What if we pass this budget and it doesn't go on to a mill levy? And next year I'm back to the same thing, defunding the police because now we gotta cut from everywhere to cover his budget.
What I would think in your position, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to go there because I'm not. But what, what I would say is you did what the responsible thing. You can't, we're not, I don't know what's gonna happen to me tomorrow. I might get suspended by tomorrow in a board meeting, I don't know. But you know, I've gotta make the decision based on what we're doing right now. And if we keep kicking this down the road, nothing gets done.
You buy a house, you have a 30-year mortgage. You have no idea, 15 years from now, you're gonna be alive, or if the country is going to be Venezuela, or if you're just gonna have a better job.
How much your taxes are gonna be.
You'll pay your mortgage off in 15 years instead of 30. You have to make a decision and work toward a goal.
I feel like you're not, I mean, Officer Moore needs to be able to move forward, getting other funding. And it sounds like, if I'm understanding correctly, he can't do that unless this budget moves forward. So you're kind of like holding him hostage to not follow through with what he wants to do to make our town better.
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with approving it. We could always put in for an amendment. And if we don't get the money, that's on John. He'll, he'll work it out, but you have to.
I just wanted more information than I was given in the first budget meeting. I was not.
Flat out, if I fail, I will stand up in front of you and take every single, I will stand up there, take my best, take my best off, give it to you guys and let everybody take shots at me if I can't get this through or if I fail to do this. This is something that this town needs, I am passionate about it. This is something we need to do for everybody, period. And the best way to do that is by moving forward with this so we can get somebody hired, we can get somebody on board, and then we can keep going forward. You really think I, I'm gonna take, I wanna hire somebody and then just go, oh, never mind, you're without a job in a year, see you later? I mean, that's pretty shitty, pardon me, but that's pretty damn shitty to do this somewhere.
Instead of saying, what if we fail, what if we fail, or what if we succeed, what if we succeed? Make it, just make it work.
Okay, do we have any other issues on the budget outside of the boots?
Do you guys have any questions to help us over? Yes. I, you know, since we do, and where is, it is, so where do you wanna start? I have a whole. Can you go through, okay, what is the, do you happen to know what the Friends of the Library fundraises and donates to the library every year? So, I do. So they have a, so the Friends of the Library through contributions. So the last year it was $36,000, it tends to average about $30,000, $30,000 per year they fundraise. And that's for programming? Programming. And the part of the budget that is accounted for here in the 110 and 120 is for administration and facilities. Which, I'm sorry, what? No, go, no, go ahead there. So, yeah, so, um, so administration, salaries and wages, compensated absence, employer contributions, there's small item in there for supplies. The Friends of the Library will also take it over some of those payments this year. Telephone and internet, which I also apply for grants. Um, professional services, which is IT that I cannot handle or I don't want to handle, that I wanna contract out. Um, so also in there was Black Mountain Report. Um, so library facilities, the only money that's in there are repair and maintenance supplies and services when something breaks and electric utility services and some property insurance. So what the town pays for, between the town and the county, they pay for salaries and facilities. Most of our, so most of our other services are paid for by donors and partners. Um, we had an increase in salary this year due to make, converting a part-time employee into a full-time employee. And I can tell you why, give me a moment here and I can tell you why. So your library, if you remember, is ranked number two in the nation as far as use for library per size. So right now, what that means that in 2019, we had 40, 47,000 people come through, 2020, 35,000 people. Between June and August, we had 14 and a half thousand people come in. Um, so program attendance, eight thousand, so in 2019, 8,000 people attended library programs. 2020, it dropped to 53,000 people. So so far, June, July, August, over 1,000 people have attended programs at the library. So breaking that down even further, um, by year, town contributions by mill, 2019 was 17 mills, 2020 was 10 mills, 2021 was 12 mills. Um, so the county gives us a half a mill, a half a mill to each public library in the county. So you're saying, so just back up again, so in 2018? In 2019, 18, 19 fiscal year. Was 17 mills? 17 mills. 2020, it was 10 and a half mills. That year, our county contribution grew quite a bit. 2021, it was 12 mills. So other income by year, 2019, we had donations primarily to the Friends of the Library, $25,628, 2020, $32,369, and 2021, $36,000. So without our donations, so without our donations and contributions and partners, we would just have a building and a staff, nothing else. So breaking that down even further, based upon 200 visitors a day, which is conservative in the summer, we can get 300 to 400 visitors per day. In an eight-hour day with two staff members, we usually have one dedicated to programming. Two staff members. Visitor contact per hour per person is 12 and a half. So basically, not basically, every 4.8 minutes, we have an interaction with the public who actually needs something. Um, so that's how busy we are, and that's why I added, not just for, just for our visitor contact, but for longevity and to increase library, quality library services. Um, and I also wanna say that it's not just books, you know, we provide business assistance, financial literacy, early literacy skills, adult life learning programs, economic recovery for individuals. We refer individuals to the rest of the town all summer. Um, two years ago, we had a nine-to-one return on income ratio. Not many libraries can have that number. So just so you know why I'm asking, I asked for the extra mill and the increase in staff. Do you have any questions for me? Do you have a cost estimate on your outdoor? Yeah, our first estimate was $65,000. Um, I hired them because I was trying to gouge it. Um, yeah, so I think so, so far, we achieved at least 15,000, not less, and we keep looking for ways to, to decrease that cost. Right now, we have $10,000 dedicated to a project. And volunteers in the area will provide some support as well.
Can you move the money that we had talked about into her budget? Move the fund this year?
Yes. So this is. And so I know we're gonna talk about this at a later date, but just as of ARPA funds, to support public health expenditures or advocacy and spending that's involved in that category, addressing negative economic impact caused by public health emergencies. So we are partnering with the Accelerate Montana Rural Innovation Institute to support entrepreneurs in and as moving into the area. I'm contacted to have waters for the need to do so, so there are costs there that can be placed. And as far as water, sewer and broadband, you know, I can talk to Kelly about water projects. Um, broadband infrastructure definitely qualifies for them. So I just wanna throw out their other, our other items we need consideration. Thank you. Yep.
So your budget went up 28,000 from prior year usage. Are you needing more, is that what you're asking for or just going over in general?
So I asked for 13 mills from the town. The town came back with less than what we received for last year, so we get out that too.
On 168 here. That's why I'm questioning if you're asking for more or what, what exactly are you asking for? That's helpful.
From, from the town. So I requested, I have to get my, so I requested. I have lots of sticky notes here.
Do you have those mills?
I'm getting there. So I, so I requested $49,000 and you came back with 41, 466. Um, so the 49 is equal to, 49883 is equal to 13 mills. That's only a one-mill increase over last year. And that is to support bulk salary, which historically, even if you look at it now, library employees are the lowest paid employees in the town. And you know that we have been working on that for years to get the salaries up. So that increase will cover salary and use of facilities. We spent more maintaining our bathrooms in the last two years than we have ever before.
So what does a library cost us a year? Just out of curiosity.
Um, the whole library operating fund last year, but it doesn't count books because the Friends of the Library takes care of all the programming and everything.
What does it cost the family?
So what is the cost of town? In 2000, or 2021, our contribution to the library.
From real property taxes was 32,295.
So the total of, so in 2021, the town contributed 46,311 dollars.
That, that does not include what, 57,000 in benefits, right Ginger?
Um, yeah, if you add PERS and health insurance.
Yes, that is true.
But that's this year, that is this year.
Right, that's this year.
But the town.
With the new full-time person.
Yep, that is. Their traditional 57,000 has not shown in that.
Correct.
Can somebody help me find that number on here?
It's all under one.
All insurance.
Is why they were asking to break it under carpet.
Insurance and PERS and stuff is all one line, one lump sum. It doesn't break up into departments and it doesn't show in their actual budget.
Library operating fund budget for 2021. Am I correct, it was 139,87 plus insurance?
Yeah, all these budgets on here don't show insurance. So there's like, like what John was saying, there's another 24,000 per cop, insurance too.
So we're, we're spending all, a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars basically for the library.
Forty-three is all we gave.
Forty-three.
Is all we gave. Yeah, hundred thousand, yeah, hundred thousand.
And we're worried about, what this guy is proposing is bringing somebody in that's, that's taking care of our children.
I understand what you're saying, but let's stick with the library.
Well, it is, it's not to do with the library. We're spending this much money on the library and we're worried about that much money on the police force.
You wanna put a value on early literacy skills, please do.
You know what? This thing right here, we all have this.
Right, but the library does a lot of that.
Well, I, I realize that.
Yeah, don't take them care.
We're worried about, we can get a lot of volunteers.
So they don't have, yeah, so, um, and programs and stuff like that.
IT, IT tripled every year.
So are we contributing, I think that was in our last.
Hello?
Hello.
Hey, Randy.
So guys, I also wanna say.
We're talking about the libraries, so.
Is there public comment right now?
No. Sorry, Randy, hang on for a bit.
Okay, no public comment, I'll shut my mic down.
Well, I'll come back down and come back to you when we're done.
So I also wanna say, I completely and truly understand what you're doing and the value of budgeting. But I also just don't wanna be overlooked based on what we, what the proceeds pose for the county, that's all. I just want you to know what services our community is getting for the money the town invests.
And I, we appreciate that, that's why I'm asking you very specifically what you're looking. And we appreciate that, that's why I'm asking you very specifically what you're looking for, so these folks.
At our last meeting, I think we determined that.
Ginger moved money around, it changed.
So she, so she does.
It comes out to one point three five million, so it's twelve thousand.
Okay, so what is the total number of millage that she will be getting? Or the library will be getting?
If you do it monetarily, it's thirteen point six five.
Thirteen point six five mills, okay. Is, is that correct?
Is that a total or just what shows on the one-ten section?
Is that in revenues that you're on? So you win the expenditure.
I was going to say, there's no one-ten in revenue.
Sorry, it's my mistake. So for, maybe I'm not reading this right, but so I'm showing that the total contribution our funds is equal to slightly less what we received last year.
Okay, and I guess I'm going to page for a revenue budget.
And I could be completely mistaken.
And I thought, and this one is, I just want to make sure that I'm right.
This one's the date of nine seven.
Is that she had requested forty-nine thousand dollars and she's still, and the library is only receiving forty-one, four sixty-six.
What's the forty-one, forty-six, okay, from the cares funding, but that is, you know, that is the band.
Yeah. So I would like to see for the programming that Karen requested forty, was it forty-nine even or was there?
That'll work. Oh, yeah, that'll absolutely work too. The actual number was four-nine eighty-three.
Four-nine eight-eight-three. Could be the town contribution for that.
Which is an increase of how much then? Minus forty-one, we have forty-one, four forty-six.
Or is the three thousand dollars over the three?
Three thousand dollars. So that would be.
And she did that, right?
That was with the cares.
Oh, we gave you that money, yeah.
Yes.
Did we ever find out the, huh? No. Did we ever, uh, no, isn't it right Lisa?
What's that?
The library, there's no change there. She got, you got what you wanted for it, right?
One point three and after one lock meeting, correct?
Yeah.
So, okay, so let's back, let's back up a little bit. So the original allocation was forty-one, four six six. Four thousand, six hundred and forty-one was added to that.
From the cares funding.
For, yeah. So that brings it very close to our last year's total.
Yeah, and I thought we had an at that meeting, wasn't there, that we would do, because it was four-nine eight-eight-three, we would bring it up to fifty thousand dollars. I distinctly.
Go back and listen to me.
Yeah, I distinctly remember saying, because I was like, well, we'd like to.
I don't know that there was.
It was, they asked for an additional mill in that extra COVID care money.
Yeah.
To one point three.
But that, that was not included in my request. That was after the discussion about the cares funding.
That was, I think that's where the money was found.
I think that was, we initially said that.
Did we ever get how much, did we ever get a total on how much came in or where the other cares money went?
Yeah.
Speaking of this. Was the forty-six hundred all we got in cares money?
Yeah.
So where was the, how much did we get? It's not in here on the.
That's what we got.
Forty-six hundred.
Yeah. So it was.
Well, you said that's what's left.
Because they had had COVID expenses.
That could take the, yeah, I remember all that.
The main thing was for the handwashing stations and supplies for those. So the money could have gone back to the fund that spent it initially. But the library did have qualifying numbers or, you know.
So total cares money, we got forty-six hundred.
I would still like it to be the amount that whether, however we get there, the forty-nine, eight-eighty-three. So it's, I think it's another, was it three thousand dollars, four thousand dollars that we can get to the library to fulfill their.
Karen, is there a place in your project that you are short funds and, you know, because your expenses, do you have a plan for that extra money you're asking for? I think that's been a question I've heard around town. When people have listened to you asking for extra money and they're not exact where that's going, me included. And having clear bits for salaries or, you know, what exactly do you want to spend the money on or for?
Salary.
Yep, this increase will go directly towards salary.
Thank you for asking. I guess I would be pointing out, I don't think there is another department that has a nonprofit support arm that pays for their day-to-day activities.
I don't know the screen, I'm just looking for, is where are you going to pull funds from? Is that a, are those slots?
No, estimated ending cash balance. We have chapters. Reserves out of what time?
We still have to find.
Out of general.
I thought you said your budget was a hundred and thirty thousand over.
It is, but you have to have, you have to find the spot to pull money from one spot to move it to another. I can't just.
But don't we have, we have an ending cash balance last year of reserve? Do we have reserves? Do you have a?
Yes, we do have reserves. But we still have to find somewhere to pull it from to get there.
You don't have a line either, or are you missing?
Uh-uh.
But you've got a reserve.
Next year, we have two hundred and thirty thousand still out there? Well, I don't know if they got some company or two hundred and thirty.
Out of the general fund.
Okay, do we have anything else anybody want to look at? Do we have, anyone else have anything else that they want to have a question with? Okay, I'll go back to a little public comment. Brandy, if you want to jump back on, you can come back on. Anyone else have anything while we're waiting?
Can you click her hand? No?
Or just her microphone button, is that? Oh, so it means she's unmuted on her end, so she has to unmute for it to become green. Yeah, she should be able to hear to unmute herself.
She needs to mute herself.
Maybe she's not there.
Okay.
She made a comment in the chat log, if you want to go back to it. You need to go into the chat log here.
Are you sure you want to go yet?
No, we don't need that, no, do not go into the chat log, that should not be part of.
Okay, that's why she didn't come back.
Call Brandy again.
How bad is it?
Brandy, are you there?
She just needs to unmute herself.
What about that hand button up there?
Oh, she, no, she just needs to unmute herself because it says send unmute request. And so that means to unmute herself.
Can you push through the jury?
Yep, give me.
Second. Hi.
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 All right, thank you.
Two is probably safe.
That was six thirty, fourth of the morning.
Stop.
On committee.
I just want to know. It's interesting to know because traditionally, my question is why she already has one of the rights?
But it might be difficult to say, hey, your taxes are coming up by two hundred percent a year, now you're going to get.
Okay, so what happens?
Overtime.
Wouldn't the COBUs come up with more? I'm just looking for more comprehensive coverage of the best price. You know all about the battery, I know you do. That's price guaranteed, that's what I'm looking for. And we officially, you know, as trust that you are a student. So how, and I would kind of attach payers to it. So not that county tax dollars are spent appropriately in this paper. But yes, I just think there is, logistically, whether it be more annexation, whether it be pay payers to the base to spread out that price, because you have two armed services possibly covered out. Where are we? The golf course, guy view, ten miles, South of Town and whatever, and so.